All right, well, I want to welcome everybody to your city hall here at Pearland. And thank everybody for coming out. Before we get on to our meeting at 6:30, we have a couple of presentations to make. It's always exciting to be able to issue proclamations and special awards when we either receive them or we're actually presenting them. So with that, I'd like to bring up our director of planning, Martin Griggs. And this month, the month of October is Planning Month. So as you know, we've got several of our Planning and Zoning Commissioners here as well, several other staff members. So I'm going to read the proclamation and then afterwards, we'll probably want to take a picture. And then after that, we have a special award from Scenic Texas that we received last week, but we're going to make that presentation here in a few minutes. We were honored with a Platinum Award this year, which is very, very hard to get, but achieve that as a city. So let me put my eyes on and we'll get that going. All right. Whereas, whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, and other places, community planning and comprehensive plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live. Whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, the full benefits of planning require public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of Planning and Zoning Commission, who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of Pearland. And whereas, we recognize the many valuable contributions made to the City of Pearland by the professional planners of the Community Development Department, and extend our heartfelt thanks for their continued commitment to public service. Now, therefore, I, Kevin Cole, by the power vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Pearland, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Community Planning Month, and would like everybody to recognize the efforts of our Planning Department, staff, and our planning. If you're Planning and Zoning Commissioner, please stand up for just a second. All right. All right, let's recognize them, if you would. And Martin, this is obviously, as Mayor Reed's always said, suitable for framing. So for you guys there in the, in the department. And I started out on Planning and Zoning Commission. So I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission back in 94, ran for council, was elected in 95. And so I've been involved in planning from, from day one, from getting involved. And in fact, I was on for about a year, eight months. Finally, one day in the middle of a P and Z meeting, I raised my hand, and everybody said, what? And I said, we've been doing a lot of zoning stuff. When do we start planning? And just raised the question of more and more planning in our community, and planning our entire ETJ, not just what was inside the city, and the city limits ended at O'Day Road back in those days. So you can imagine, the rest of the city wasn't even being thought about. So why don't you share a little bit, and we want to get, introduce some of your staff, and we also want to get a photo.
Of course. Well, Mayor, thank you very much for those kind words. I have with me my staff. Start with Mohammed Brema, back in the back, my senior planner, followed by Florence Buaku. She is taking over for Platts within the city, and also my right hand for the Conference of Plan. Then I have Patrick Bauer. He is on his first day of actually being in the office with me. So it's an honor and great to steal him from the city of Georgetown.
It's up to you.
Then I have Shelby Lowe, who is my, my other right hand, and Kyle Swanier, who is my development inspector. All of that to say, it takes a team, and the Conference of Plan wouldn't be the work and the effort that it is without the dedicated staff, without the Planning and Zoning Commissioners, without the Community Planning Advisory Committee, all of those people who helped make the city what it is. So, thank you.
Do what? Yeah, bring them up. We want the, the planning, we get a photo with the planning staff here. We'd also like the Planning and Zoning Commissioners to come on up that are here. Let's see. Lawrence, why don't you come on up? It takes an attorney to make sure that we keep all these people in line, and Lawrence Provence does all the, the development side of things. And I hate to do this to Ms. Kendra. Come on down. But why don't I, I hate to like put you on the spot the instant you walk into the room, but apologize for that. If you would, I'm going to hand the mic to you. Okay, I'm going to open this up so you don't have to. Okay, if that'll, that'll work. And you can explain a little bit about Scenic Texas. Explain a little bit about this award and what it means to, to get it, what it takes to get it.
Hi, everyone. My name's Kendra Ralston. I am the program coordinator for Scenic Texas and Scenic City Certification Program. First off, just want to say congratulations, and you know, thank you for all y'all's hard work to keep Pearland such a great city. For those of you who don't know, the Scenic City Certification Program recognizes cities that implement high scenic standards, scenic qualities. And we look at things like tree protection, lighting standards, sign ordinances, things of that sort. We have five levels of recognition, and Pearland is the highest level, which is our Platinum level. And you can see, they've gotten gold in the past, and now they're at the top, Platinum. So I just want to say congratulations. It's not an easy application in the first place to get through, and it's, it's not an easy task to be Platinum. So, you know, great job to everybody that worked on it and got Pearland to where they are. I grew up in La Porte, so I'm pretty familiar with this area, and it's really cool to, you know, see Pearland given this honor and to be the one to give it to you all. So again, I just want to say, you know, thank you all and congratulations.
So there were several of us available to go down to TML last week at the George R. Brown Convention Center and receive the award. And I, I'd like to take just a moment because it, this doesn't happen with just me as a mayor or these guys at the city council level. I mean, this legitimately takes a full team to make happen. It, we recognize Planning Month right before here, and it starts there. That's exactly where it starts, with comprehensive planning, understanding what your city is going to be when it grows up. Doesn't mean that it won't change. It will. But it's putting in the necessary rules, regulations, that bring about a scenic and a beautiful place to live. It also takes dedicated staff and planning departments, code enforcement, plan reviews, all of that. It takes people on planning and zoning with the same vision that the city council has to set this out. So this award started, I think the first year was 2011. So 10 years ago, we were one of the first cities in Texas to receive a Scenic Texas Award. Five years later, still got the gold, and as I understand, missed Platinum by three points. So just missed it. And, and this year, obviously, got the Platinum Award. And so, like I said, I just wanted to, to make sure that the folks out there understand, this takes a tremendous effort by a lot of people. And Kendra, we thank you. We thank Scenic Texas for not only the award, but what you do to make Texas beautiful, welcoming. We can do that not only in personality and who we are as people, but we can also do it in the way we enter a city. And if you know, here in Pearland, when you move from City of Houston and into Pearland, we want to make sure that you know you've moved from one city to the other, and you notice that, you see it. And so, we're proud and want people to be welcomed into our city, and we think these types of awards help us do that. So thank you very much. All right. Josh, are we rolling still?
Yes, sir. We're good to go.
Sorry. Don't have to put that on tape. How's that? All right, we'll go ahead and get started. All right. We will call this regular city council meeting for Monday, October the 11th of 2020, of 2021, to order at 6:35 PM. With that, we're going to go into our invocation by Councilmember Arbone and Mayor Pro Tim Hernandez, lead us in our pledges to both flags. If you would rise. Thank you, Mayor. If y'all would bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you once again for bringing us together tonight, help us to do the work that's honoring and pleasing to you, be with those who are protecting our freedoms and liberties overseas, and all our first responders here in the States, and here specifically in Pearland. And just thank you for all the blessings that you bestowed on us. In your name we pray. Amen. All right. Thank you all for that. And moving forward in our agenda, roll call and certification of quorum. Members Perez and Little are absent tonight. Member Perez, I think, is a little bit under the weather, and member Little is out, is out of town. They'll be both absent from the chamber the rest of the evening. All other members are present. So we do have a quorum for tonight's business. Before we move forward in the agenda, I did, because both members are out tonight, they had placed what is new business item number four on the agenda. And I know we have a second and final reading for the registration ordinance for STRs. Since they placed it on, they did ask if we could move that ordinance, you know, to the next meeting. And typically, out of professional courtesy, we do that. Obviously, if you ask for something to be on the agenda, you want to be here when we vote. But I am going to go ahead and keep the committee on for this, for this, for this night. We can go ahead and have that discussion, hopefully, adoption of that, and we can move that forward. So is there any objection to council to moving those? And item number six, our consultant for the community survey got caught up in the Southwest Airlines mess, cancellations of flights and all that, and is not here. So we will have to set that one aside for a, a future agenda. So that'll be four, five, and six. So, all right, moving forward, but we do have one citizen who did ask specifically on new business item number four, and if we did move it, to go ahead and have under citizens' comments to register those comments. Mayor Pro Tim?
Sir, Mayor, we have two now. We have, the first speaker this evening is Melissa Flores. If you could please make your way to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and we will have a timer on display for you for your convenience. Thank you for being here this evening.
My name is Melissa Flores. My, my address is 3407 Kleber Court, 77584. I'm here to talk about my personal experience living next door to an Airbnb for the last two years, and how it affects my neighborhood. At most single-family homes, people wake up, go to work, kids go to school, everyone comes home, eats dinner, goes to bed. But Airbnbs are for the vacation life. People arrive at all times of the day and night, loud music, doors slamming at 3:00 AM, lots of talking as people unload their belongings like it's four o'clock in the afternoon. The vacationers are not concerned that the neighbor needs to get up in a few hours to go to work, or that you just got your sick child asleep only 30 minutes prior to their 3:00 AM arrival. They're there for the fun, but it's very unpleasant when your bedroom is right next to the Airbnb driveway. Unlike a bad neighbor who might party on the weekend, you're guaranteed that this will continue every few days as people come in late or leave early trying to get to the airport for their early morning flights. We live on a cul-de-sac. We have had the same neighbors for 14 years until the fateful day that one of our neighbors sold to an investor. We know who is supposed to be there or not. We can look out for each other. But with the addition of an Airbnb next door, you have to ask yourself, is this person supposed to be there or not? Which leads into what happens when your Airbnb becomes a place of illegal activity? My family has witnessed firsthand the vacation people, and as the clientele went from vacationers to criminals. The first group came in with camera equipment, light, large lighting equipment, and a string of young women coming and going all the time. Make your own judgment on what activity was going on with that group. Then came the point when the FBI showed up at the now-famous Glitter Bomb House. You can view that fun on YouTube at Glitter Bomb Trap Catches Phone Scammer. Just skip to the minute 18 to see as our cul-de-sac became the hub of criminal activity. Money laundering was the crime being committed. In the video, there was a woman stopped by the police. Her face is blurred out, and I question whether that woman is the owner of the Airbnb. So now what? We bought into our neighborhood being for single-family homes, and it's quickly turning into something else. The owner now tries to avoid the illegal short-term rental agreements by moving one group out and replace them within 24 hours. I always know when there's a turnover, when the curb is covered in garbage.
Ms. Flores, we will permit you 30 more seconds.
If you care about Pearland families, neighborhoods, and the community as a whole, there needs to be some type of restrictions placed on these owners. But how will you even know which houses But how will you even know which houses are vacation rentals? Is there going to be someone to check these rental sites every day such as Airbnb, VRBO, Vacasa, Home2Go, FlipKey, Evolve, private rentals, et cetera? So as you sleep comfortably tonight, remember those of us who will be wondering who will be driving in the driveway of our next door Airbnb, vacationer or criminal, both of which have changed our neighborhood for the worse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Next, Mayor, we have Valerie Hobson. You could please make your way to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please try to limit your comments to three minutes and we appreciate you for being here with us this evening.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Hobson.
Can you please speak into the microphone?
My name is Valerie Hobson. I live at 11516 Rochelle Way and South Gate Community, and I'm the president of our HOA. And I would like to first thank the city for getting an award for scenic and zoning. And I just wanted to state that as zoning, all of our communities were zoned as residential single family homes. And now they're about to come into commercial zoning or commercial businesses are coming in. And I understand that you guys are looking for revenue for the city, but at what cost? Were there sex trafficking? We don't know who's a sex offender. We don't know who's renting out our, our neighbors' houses. They don't know who's renting out their houses. And we have families that we have in our community that we all are one big family. We started prayer in this meeting today. This is my first meeting and I appreciate that because I'm praying for our community. But when we allow other homeowners to allow other individuals to come in our community, we don't have security like our commercial businesses have for multi-families to come visit. There's no cameras at every entrance. We can't look at the license plate and figure out what happened at that house next door or two streets over. So for, I just feel like we're, the city is allowing things to happen for revenue, but at what cost? Our families, our communities? And then now that we have a zoning award for the city of Pearland, what happens when our residential zoning is null and void for revenue purposes? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Hobson, you did have another item on here about sound walls. If you would like to speak on that, we can permit you another two minutes to do so.
Oh, yes. I would like to mention about our sound walls as well. Even though we got the zoning award, we're changing our zonings for our commercial businesses and it's along our residential communities and there's no sound barriers being put up. The foliage for like trees and all of that, that's not blocking the traffic from 288. That's not blocking the traffic around our community, our communities. We're in bed at night. I hear every truck that drives by, I hear every car that drives by. I hear the trash man and I get up and go to work every day, my husband and I. So, I mean, you're, the city is allowing these zoning changes is around our communities and we bought in those areas because we didn't have all that traffic. So I understand about the revenue for the, the city, but however, let's, let's have those businesses put up sound walls for our residential areas in the city.
Does that conclude your comments?
That concludes my comment.
Thank you so much for being with us this evening, Mayor. That concludes the public comments.
And Ms. Valerie, thank you. This is your first meeting at City Hall, so we thank you for coming out very much, very much. Um, and we are going to move into our public hearings. And so I would actually, uh, those who want to hear more on STR, hang around a little bit because we will have some discussion as we get into the committee. And I believe our city attorney is going to address some of the questions that were raised tonight, even in some of these comments may help some clarity there. So as we move forward in our agenda, we have public hearing number one. I'll read, uh, just this into the record as to the purpose of the meeting. Public hearing, a request by Lonnie Turner, applicant and owner for approval of a zone change from Neighborhood Service NS District, General Business GB District, uh, at 3,054 Cullen Parkway, Pearland, Texas. So with that, we'll move to staff report. And then following that will be applicant's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, good evening. Uh, this first, uh, request here, this first public hearing is a request for approval of a zone change from the Neighborhood Service, also known as NS District, to the General Business GB District on approximately 0.39 acres of land located at 3054 Cullen Parkway, the northwest corner of Cullen Parkway and Fight Road. Uh, this property was rezoned, uh, from R1 to GB in 2000. And the applicant intent, as indicated in the statement, is to rezone this property to accommodate additional uses, including a massage establishment. Um, staff, massage establishment is, uh, is allowed only in the GB, but it's not allowed in the Neighborhood Service. Uh, i- it's allowed in the GB district by a conditional use permit. So if this rezoning is approved, the applicant will still need to apply for a conditional use permit for the massage establishment. Um, this, uh, staff has not received any verbal or written public comments on this request. Uh, these are views of, uh, the subject property on the left side taken from, uh, Cullen Parkway. And on the right side, uh, this is another view taken from, uh, the Fight Road side. And, uh, the property is designated in the future land use plan, retail offices and services. Planning and zoning commission, uh, reviewed this request and conducted a public hearing, uh, for it on, uh, their regular meeting, uh, at, uh, on September 20th. And they, uh, voted to recommend approval of the zone change by vote of five to zero. And that concludes the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Is the applicant present? Thank you. Do you have any additional comments or presentation you'd like to make, uh, please? Okay. Just, uh, state your name and address for the record and thank you for, uh, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you all for having me. Remove this so I can breathe. Good evening, everybody. My name is Valicia Weeks. My address is, oh, what is my address? 3501, I think I'm just nervous about talking. 30, uh, not 3501, 3103 Capital Court, Pearland, Texas, 77584. And I'm actually, I was the applicant, but I'm actually speaking on behalf of my mom and dad who's sitting on the back row. Uh, Lonnie Turner is my father, um, then, and I'm representing them. He, um, built us a place to live in Pearland, which is now Cullen Parkway. Used to be County Road, I think 89 and 91. And, uh, he, well, we moved there in the late seventies. I actually attended Pearland High School and graduated a long, 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 long time ago. I had five kids grow through Pearland. I currently have one at Dawson High School. So we've been affiliated with Pearland for over 40 years. Um, when, uh, when they opened up Cullen, dad decided that he was going to rent out the house for a while. And then, uh, he, he decided to make my daughter a beauty salon. She finished Pearland High School in cosmetology and he saw that she was doing well. And so he, he decided to do that. Well, in that, I'd gone through massage school and just knowing that a massage practice could be at a beauty salon, not knowing the zoning stipulations as far as Neighborhood Services. But, uh, that's why I'm here. Um, just to hopefully be, get approved and be able to apply for a conditional use permit so that I can open my practice there. Uh, just a little bit about my practice itself. Uh, I am a vendor for the city of Pearland. This past, um, spring, I guess it was, they hired 15 of my massage therapists to come in and massage every single department. So I was really excited for the city of Pearland. Um, and I've also massaged for the Houston Ballet as well as the Houston Methodist Hospital. And just last week I had the opportunity to teach self-massage for, uh, Metro Row. But that's a part of my, uh, wellness practice. And as far as the private practice is concerned, um, the reason I'm applying for a zoning change is to apply for the CUP so that I can continue and can provide therapeutic massage to the citizens of Pearland. Uh, my son who's at Dawson now, when he was 11, was diagnosed with cancer and I massaged him and he, uh, experienced the therapeutic benefits of that. So, um, I guess I said that to say or to ask if you all will please give us the opportunity to keep mom and dad's legacy alive, to be able to have, uh, an extended business at the resident where I grew up and so that I will have the opportunity to apply for a conditional use permit. Thank you all so much and thank you for the opportunity.
Ms. Weeks, thank you for your comments. Uh, and, and you might hang out here. There may be a question or two when we get to the council, but, uh,
No problem.
You can come back and, and answer any questions.
Okay. I'd be happy to. Thank you again.
Thank you. So at this point, we'll turn to those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request and go to the, uh, to the podium, give your name and address for the record and, and you have anything to say? Second request for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. And third and final time, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. Seeing none, we'll move forward in, in the public hearing to questions and comments from city council members. Do you have anything?
I'll just add that, uh, Valicia, I've known you in the community for quite some time. You're a valued member of this community. I know that you're going to do great, uh, if we move forward with this and you, you've just, you've been around and, you know, helped people for a long time. So I'm, I'm excited to definitely, uh, help you move forward with this and, uh, continue serving our community. So, thank you.
For the planning and zoning, the diagram that had the, the image with the neighborhood services and then where we're doing, for this zone change, the area in the red outline will be the only part that's changed. The rest remains Neighborhood Services?
Correct. Correct.
I'm glad we're having Pearland businesses stay in Pearland. What will be the inspection regimen thereafter, once they get this permit? Cause I know that there's less reputable people. You guys are on the good side of massage therapy. But what will be the regimen? Cause I know that there are less reputable folks that need a little more of an eye on them. What is that going to be, Martin?
So after the zone change is completed, uh, and the general business, uh, is assigned, should this pass, uh, then they will come in for a conditional use permit. We'll go through a similar process with public hearings. Afterwards, they will submit for occupancy of the building. Uh, and then any triggers that are, are related, uh, to that may come into compliance, uh, being that it is a, a personal service use existing and will be a personal service use uh, in the future. There's not a change of use per se. But the, the only major hurdle will be, uh, getting the conditional use approved and then, uh, the stipulations that, uh, follow through with the massage establishments that we've already set.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in favor of this. I guess what's still running through my mind is I don't remember seeing the massage in our budget. I know we can't talk about it now, but that, that.
You didn't get a massage either, did you?
No, um, I'm going to be in favor of this as well and glad to, glad to keep, yeah, Pearland businesses in Pearland. So let's do it.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Uh, seeing none, we'll close this, uh, formal public hearing and move to new business item number one. And member Orlando, would you place that on the table with consideration, please?
Absolutely, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2,000 M dash 218. So moved.
Again, we have a motion, a second. We've just had staff report, the public hearing and applicant's report. So, and questions and comments from city councils. With that, we'll move, Madam Secretary, uh, vote on the issue.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2,000 M dash 218.
And just a way of, that will be on our next, uh, meeting on the 25th then for second reading.
Amy, can we, uh, get that GL code for the massages just so we know for next year's budget, please? Thank you.
All right. Moving to our public hearing number two, uh, I'll place this, uh, up for discussion. Public hearing request by Victor Ottman, applicant on behalf of Olin Wooton, owner for approval of a conditional use permit for concrete batching plant in a light industrial M1 district at 50, excuse me, 4501 Nap Road. With that, we'll move to the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, again. Uh, I'll go ahead and read the, uh, the request is, uh, for approval of a conditional use permit for concrete batching plant use within the light industrial, also known as M1 district to accommodate the construction of a cement batch plant within 77.703 acre slot currently used as a pipe processing and a storage yard located at 4501 Nap Road, uh, the northwest quadrant of Nap Road and Main Street. Uh, applicant, uh, intent, as indicated in the statement, is to build a ready mix, uh, cement, uh, plant, batch plant, which will be used for pipe coating on site as well as serving, uh, orders from external customers to the site. Uh, Nap Road will be the main access road for this facility. I staffed it not receive any verbal or written public comments from, uh, this, uh, for this, uh, request. Uh, subject, subject property is designated as industrial on the future land use plan. Uh, we have an aerial site, uh, plan. Uh, this aerial, uh, it just reflects the general layout and siding of the proposed plant within, uh, this existing site. As, as indicated, uh, the, this 77 acre site is, i- is a pipe, uh, processing and a storage facility. And I do have some views taken for this facility. These photos, uh, taken looking back towards existing, uh, storage yard, uh, from, from Nap Road. And I do have views for Nap Road itself. As you can see, the current condition of Nap Road on the left side, uh, looking towards Main Street and on the right side, looking back towards, uh, uh, towards the west. And, uh, the planning and zoning commission reviewed this request at their meeting on, uh, September 20th and conducted a public hearing and the commission were in favor of the requests with the staff recommended conditions. And these conditions were, uh, first, geotechnical report to assess the condition of Nap Road and a TIA, uh, may be also required to be submitted and approved prior to approval of permits. Any recommendation from the report shall be followed by the applicant. And the second condition is to, uh, for the proposals to comply with all the, uh, required federal and state, uh, standards as well as anything required by the UDC, uh, with regard to noise hours of operations. Uh, they already had applied for, uh, their permit, uh, from, uh, the Texas Commission for Environmental Quality, TCQ, and I believe they have approval. It's, uh, in, included in the packet and there's elaborate, uh, conditions and requirements in that, uh, in that permit. And that's the staff report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mohammed. Uh, is the applicant here? Ah, thank you. You have, uh, any other report, um, that you want to make? Just make sure you give your, uh, name and address for the record, please.
My name's Victor Houtman. On behalf of Mr. Wood, proper owner. Go ahead and, um, have a, this is the current business that we have in, in that, uh, facility. Is the fusion bond epoxy painting, uh, on the inside or on the outside of pipe, also at pipe storage, uh, facility. And, uh, there was a, um, ready mixed, uh, batch plant there, um, to the, the prior owners, which was, um, Charcore. And they dismounted their equipment in the same spot where we're going to be, uh, operating. Um, I think it was December, January, January this year. Um, and so we are, uh, looking for a conditional use permit, um, start up.
Does that complete your report?
Well, um, they requested the, uh, uh, traffic impact analysis. We did forward that, uh, through the website and also through email. And the, uh, GL technical report, the bore samples were taken yesterday, but we should have that report, uh, within two weeks.
You're already moving forward on that. Okay. Uh, if you want to, we'll, we'll, we'll probably have some que, we may have some questions for you. So if you want to hang tight, we'll do the, uh, audience for and against, and then we may come back to you for some questions. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right. With that, we'll open the, the public up, uh, the public hearing up for those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Go to the podium. Second request for those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. And then third and final time, those wishing to speak for or against this proposed request. Seeing none, moving in that direction, we'll Seeing none, moving in that direction, we'll open it up for city council questions, comments, concerns. Mr. Owens?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I got a couple of questions I'd like to discuss with you. So you're running, when you bought this, you're still running a batch plant out there now?
There was a batch plant there, but it was for intentional use. Prior company was CharCorp. Company I worked for is MTIP Corp. They bought off. CharCorp moved out and they moved out their, their batch plant equipment.
Okay, so you're opening it up now to other customers to come in and buy from you?
Yes, yes. We're looking at third parties and, you know, probably...
Notice that you're saying that trucks are going to be arriving between four and six o'clock in the morning? In that area is what's stated in here?
Yes.
And those, what, are 10-yard trucks?
Yes, 10 cubic yard trucks.
All right, so, I, to be honest with you, I don't, I don't think Nap Road's going to hold up to that trucks. I don't know what, you know, how many trucks you're going to have in and out during, in a daily period of time.
We're thinking of starting out with anything between 10 and 25 trucks. But right now, the road is being used for the piping, transportation of the piping. And, you know, that road's been there 30 years. And we're the only ones that actually access the road.
So are these your trucks or just people coming to buy?
You're talking about the concrete trucks or the pipe trucks?
No, the, the people that you're expecting to come through, they're on a daily, are they just buying?
Oh, no, these are third-party owners. We don't own them, we don't own the trucks.
So I would imagine you got a pretty good sized washout for the trucks when they come back in and load up?
Yes, yes, that's all going to be part of the facility.
Yeah, and just 10-yard truck loaded out, what kind of tons do you think that is? The tonnage on it?
I guess, well, I've looked at around 28, 30,000 pounds.
Yeah, because what I'm driving at, you know, through the Federal Highway Administration, 18-wheeler, which these are not 18-wheelers. One 18-wheeler does the same amount of damage on a roadway as 7,600 cars vehicles. Ours do. So I would imagine the number would be less, but, you know, if you look at the pictures on Nap Road there, it's not going to be, it's going to be chewed up before long. And I think, Robert, have y'all looked at that on the nap, the condition it is and what these trucks will do 25 or 30 a day?
Councilman Owens, one of the items that they're doing is a geotechnical report associated with that to determine what the findings are. But Nap Road is one of our lower rated on our pavement condition index.
Yeah, it looked like it, it pretty well was because, you know, you don't have anything at the base of that road. A little bit of asphalt on the front of it and, and that kind of truck usage is going to...
Yeah, the bore samples that were done yesterday were 10 feet deep.
Is there, having that discussed, what are you, what are you thinking about, you know, if we start seeing deterioration of the, of Nap Road, about you coming in and fixing that and repairing it?
We're willing to, you know, with the staff recommendations.
Is, okay.
We'll do the repairs and what have you.
Is that going to be within this information that we have here, if this is granted? Is that going to be captured in there for future?
So as requested, Councilman Rowan's, the recommendation for conditions are not included in the resolution. Those would need to be added by amendment or through the motion for approval.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we probably need to do that, given the condition of the roadway there and the condition of what you're going to be putting on the roadway is for the trucks and what have you. And, you know, we're, we're very limited on how much we can come out and spend on that one. You know, I think last year, 1.4 million on pothole patching and things of that nature. So that, that I think, you know, if we're going to, if, if it's going to be allowed to use it on there, that's, that's one of the questions I have. Other side of it is too, I don't know how council is going to vote, you know, on something like this coming out. But I think this is one of the questions that we come across with planning and zoning. They had no problem with it at all. And not having a joint meetings of planning and zoning to hear our concerns, I think, is, is, is not, really not a good thing for right now, you know, to be, because, you know, at some point in time, if we try to override planning and zoning, you know, the headache that we go through. But, so there's conditions, I think, that needs to be put on that for the future of the roadway, you know, in that area. And, and I know you're looking at, doing some geotech stuff on it, you know, to take some readings on it. But it's more, you know, that many trucks that you're looking at, you're kind of beating that roadway down. And, you know, and there's what it, what it makes it looks at. I'll take you back to probably 2002. And Mr. Coles was sitting there, knows what this conversation was, when, when there was another batch plant that wanted to be put in here. And, and the reason they wanted a batch plant was the, I guess it was Pat O'Dea, and him had some a third of yard concrete, you know, out there that they needed these little wheelers to load up a third of yard to get out there and do some patching and stuff like that. And it become a big obstacle through there, you know, you know, of being able to do that. And the city during that time said, no way, you know, we could do that. We don't do that. We don't have that. And I told them, I said, you know, well, the school district is doing it now, you know? So that's what it is. So this is kind of reissuing that out there, which is a much larger operation to do that. And especially, how many trucks do you say a day would be loaded out?
Start out with 10 and 25 a day.
25 a day, max?
10, 25, yeah, well, if it starts getting higher.
Yeah, that's, say, any work from 10 to 25 trucks loaded out with full load leading out of there, that road's not going to last that long. There's, there's no way.
But they have the pipe process sometimes required that these pipe trucks are parked on that road all along the road. Now, there's nothing, I mean, across from us, there's a cemetery. And at the very end, on the two ends, there's a traffic light. And on the other end, it ends at a railroad track.
Yeah.
So in the past, Mr. Wooton, who was the property owner, have applied to take responsibility of the road with the city of Pearland, but...
Okay, and you don't got approval out of TCQ for that time in the morning, 4:00, 6:00 and 4 o'clock, 6 o'clock AM trucks coming in? They give you their air approval already?
Yes.
You know, to do that, be able to do that. That's really my concern on it, Mayor, that, that there's concerns. And I'm more concerned about the roadway out there and how that's going to happen, you know, to do that. And I want to make sure there's something that's placed in this, you know, as we go through here. Make sure we're covered for that particular area because it's, you know, it costs taxpayers money in order to do it, is what it amounts to. Okay?
All right, thank you, Member Owens. Any other questions, comments? Miss, Member Kamkar?
Team, can we pull up the diagram of the location? Oh, is this, Mr. Hauptman, this is changing from pipe, bore facility?
That's the pipe yard.
And then is this going to be a full tilt concrete batch plant?
Oh, just the, just the area in red. The pipe process is still, that's our main business. This is going to...
You're still going to have pipes laying around the pipe yard?
It's going to be there.
How big is the site, Martin, in the red? Is converting to a batch plant?
So, Mr. Hauptman, if I'm correct, it's right about where my pointer is?
Yes, that's, that's, it's about 6,000 square feet. That's what it's going to take up approximately, the batch plant.
And for Mr. Hauptman, this is not for internal use? This is for...
It's for both.
Third-party, other people are going to buy from you?
It's for third-party and internal use if we do get the business for pipe insulation with concrete.
I'm just really conflicted. As somebody who works in land development, a concrete batch plant is not my idea in a relatively suburban community. I'm really struggling with what this means. I agree with Member Owens' point. That road is going to be something that we're going to spend millions of dollars possibly, probably, let's call it, the next five or 10 years. It just depends on when we get to it. The taxpayer is going to really lose if we have 25 people. Let's, let's say it's 50 weeks a year, five days, five days a week, then 25 trucks in and out, in and out. I mean, that road won't exist. And we get, we, the taxpayers in this room get to fund fixing the road that you're going to get to use. Are you willing to give any dollars to that, considering you're going to be the prime benefactor?
I understand from the property owner that that is the case. Because he has tried in the past to apply for a complete responsibility for that road.
You are going to give us money, then?
I, I, not, not answer that question.
Oh, I'm going to take that as a no. Mayor Owens, or not Mayor Owens, Council Owens, I agree with your comments. City Attorney, the, this passed 5-0, so how many people need to vote if this is to go down?
Just, I just want to remind everybody, this is for a CUP. And so it was, they just, the, when the Planning and Zoning Commission, they take their opinions on it, but that is not binding on this council. The council is the sole authority for the CUP.
Understood, okay. We had a big planning, so everybody knows, we had a big planning thing in the summer about being the community of choice. I keep thinking about that, being the community of choice. Being the community of choice doesn't mean having SGRs running amok. We're not going to talk about that word today. The community of choice is not having concrete batch plant within three miles of you, putting dust in the air, screwing up your roads. That's eventually going to go to 35 where we will more integrate with the traffic flow and we'll get the privilege of being behind those big trucks that spit off concrete onto your windshield. As a developer who gets to ride those, those areas around town, I probably crack my windshield twice a year. That's just a privilege I get to do, but that's because I get to be behind big trucks where I go drive out to. So I just don't see community of choice and concrete batch plant going together. I understand that the user is using a pipe plant. Pipe plant doesn't cause my windshield to crack, doesn't screw up my roads. I feel different about that. So I'm not going to get there on this. I appreciate the applicant, but I have to think about the residents. And we're going to get to pay a million, $2 million to go fix that road. And I'm not hearing that you're going to help me. So I'm not going to put that burden on the taxpayer.
If I can, yeah, jumping off of that, another thing that we discussed at our retreat in terms of planning and being a community of choice is allowing, figuring out, first of all, how to be easier on businesses. And second of all, figuring out how to allow more business uses so that we could take the burden off of the homeowner and shift some of that over to, to business uses. And so we're highly residential as a city. There are other places you might think of like Sugar Land or the Woodlands that their property taxes on homeowners can end up being lower because there's a lot of large corporations that pay a bigger share than corporations in Pearland pay, just because we don't have as many. So I think that's, that's also a consideration I have. My question, though, along this whole line of discussion would be to staff. One of the conditions is for a geotechnical report to assess the current conditions. And a traffic impact analysis shall be submitted. Any recommendations from that support, from that report shall be followed by the applicant. Is it staff's opinion, then, that that is sufficient? That, you know, we had a couple of members ask, oh, are you going to contribute financially to any degradation of this road? Would, if this report said that there's going to be significant deterioration, would there, is there an outcome possible where that would be mandated by the report? Or does that not really get us there? I guess, just to be clear, if the report says there's going to be significant damage, are we going, will there be a mechanism to collect maintenance funds from the business in question?
Councilman Orlando, with regards to the geotech report, if that shows up that significant damage as a result of the amount of trips per day, then we would look to discuss what those remedies were. Remedies would be to keep the road at the status that it's at and what repairs may be needed as a result of traffic on there. But that would be a discussion that we would have once, we need to have more information provided.
So, so it sounds like you're saying there, if that's a discussion, I guess, we're approving this or not approving this tonight. So it, it sounds from the language of this, any recommendations from that report shall be followed by the applicant. Would the recommendation be a binding statement that a financial contribution needs to be made to offset the deterioration of the road?
They would still need to have, still, even after you're, after the approval or denial here, one of the things that's still, they need to still get a permit from us. So that permit still needs to be processed. This, this is not part of that process. This is determining on their zoning and their change. So they still have a permit process that has to be followed on top of that, that this report would be tied to as well.
So it just to put, it sounds like there are some other concerns from Member Kamkar around, you know, stuff flying off of trucks. But for the concern of road deterioration, it seems like if we were to add these two conditions, we are going to address that and we're going to have a backstop through the permitting process to be able to address this to the satisfaction of our city planning department or city engineering department.
Correct. There's still, like I said, there's still that permitting process that has to be upheld as it goes through.
Got it. Thank you for those clarifications.
No, um, excuse me. We were under the understanding that the GL technical report was going to provide conclusions and that we were willing to adapt to those and, and apply with whatever needed the road, you know, be fixed. But we were thinking that that was kind of like the key to this whole thing. Is that, am I wrong? Is that not seemed to be the case? Report is not just... Want to be conclusive?
I would look to our planning department or our engineering department who put this condition here as to what your purpose behind the geotech and the TIA. I, I think I have some understanding, but I, you guys put this condition here. I think first for the geotechnical report, we need to know what's out there today. That road was built, which I've lived in Pearland 44 years and that road was there 44 years ago. So I can't for the life of me think that the subbase of that road is anywhere near what it should be to be able to handle concrete trucks. I understand it's handling pipe trucks today.
Fully loaded pipe trucks, yeah.
So, so I, that's the only question. I, I mean, we, we have to get an understanding of what's there today. But Darren, you have a question or...
Yeah, I just wanted to go ahead. I know that, I think Lawrence Proven, Deputy City Attorney, may have something to add here. And so I was going to go ahead and bring that to everyone's attention.
I was just going to suggest that if you include the staff recommended condition number one in regards to the geotechnical report, that would stop the applicant or the owner from later asserting during the permit process, they could seek a variance. So as it stands now, if there's a permit, they could seek a variance for that permit if it requires a contribution and that could be granted. Or if there's an appeal to the ZBA saying we shouldn't have to provide that type of contribution that could be granted by adopting staff recommendation number one that would fore, close or close the door on those avenues so that if this business is the one who's creating additional degradation to that road and the contributor to it, this business is the one who pays for that and not the taxpayers for the city of Pearland.
Okay. Yeah, with that clarification, I'm, I'm fine. I mean, when you look at the area, if we're going to have a concrete batch plant anywhere in the city, this is probably the place to put it. It's a balance and like Councilman Orlando said, you know, we, we want, we want business to survive and thrive here. And so from this location, if, it sounds like staff is, is comfortable with the, the road issue, then... Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with a conditional use permit.
Oh, yes. So I have a question on this. You said you're going to be selling to, I guess, third parties. So would that mean that there would be, I guess this is wholesale. So are there no sales tax or anything generated on that if it's, I'm assuming it's wholesale? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I was just trying to look at it, yeah, from that, if there were going to be any taxes generated from, sales taxes on top of the property taxes. Because it didn't look like this is going to require much of anything other than the actual, looks like machinery to the site. So it's not really going to be an enhancement to the land in any way. I was just trying to think of, you know, from a numbers perspective. If you're okay with the conversations that we've had up to this point of potentially taking responsibility for that road, then I have no issues with it to Member Carbone's point. I think if there's a place for it, this is more than likely the place. And I also just looked up how much a 10 cubic yard cement, fully loaded cement truck weighs versus a fully loaded pipe truck. And they both weigh approximately 66,000 pounds when loaded. So that, I don't know, I like learning things like that. But that is a lot of stress on roads, definitely adding additional trucks.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll comply with the Texas loads for the highways, for sure.
Real quick, the applicant made a comment and I want to ask a question around. Said something to the fact that the owner, or your owner, or maybe even the previous owners have tried to, I don't know, do more for that road or maybe get that road under ownership. So that, where I'm headed is, there's no outlet from the cemetery there? Is it to our advantage to even own that road? Maybe tear it up all they want on their property?
So, Mayor, if you don't mind, I could add to that just a little bit. So I think you indicated earlier that they had purchased that property from CharCorp, correct?
Yes.
Yes, and years ago, there was...
Yes, and years ago, there was, there were discussions with Shawcor about the possibility of the city abandoning that roadway as we know that there's not a railroad crossing there and and then you have the business there on the corner, the restaurant there. And so, question was, is if it were abandoned, then they what happens is when the city, in certain cases, when the city abandons roadway, the property owners on each side would then own to the center of that roadway. And so the question is, could the pipe yard work with the cemetery because, because not that that property would have much benefit to the pipe yard, but the pipe yard, that whole road has benefit to them, and then they could take over all the maintenance responsibilities and it would no longer be a public roadway. And that's still a viable option, but I do believe it would, it would involve their working with the cemetery or their portion of the roadway to be able to have that come to them.
Even though the cemetery has no inlet or out exit?
Absolutely, because the way, the way the law is, is that when we abandon that, because we currently hold it in trust for the public, we don't own the fee title or the actual land there. And when we abandon it and it no longer belongs to the public, it's then going to go to the adjacent property owners to the center of the roadway. And so they would then get an ownership interest in that portion of the roadway.
Okay, so maybe that's why it didn't happen in the past.
That was an obstacle, but if, you know, if you wanted to renew, renew negotiations with the cemetery for that, and that could still be a viable option in the future.
Darren, are you suggesting that they could approach the cemetery and ask them to just waive their portion or sell it to them?
It would be more of a, go to the cemetery and say, if this occurred and the city abandoned the roadway, would you be willing to give, to basically convey your interest in this property to us so that they would have, you know, the recorded title interest in all that property and they would be responsible for maintaining that road?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wooden, who's a property owner, already has been in conversation with the cemetery and they agree.
What, as of tonight?
Well, in the past, in the past, I was just.
Okay, because this is news.
Yeah, so they have, they have been in conversation in the past and the cemetery agrees, agreed. I guess it's just on behalf of Mr. Wooden.
That road, that road does not access the cemetery.
I just looked that up. There's no access point for the cemetery on it.
Yeah, so that would actually involve, there's a separate process that we would need to go through for abandoning the right of way and then of course, effectuating the conclusion to that so that that could occur, but that's still, I think, a potential option that had been explored and sounds like it may be explored again.
Okay, sounds like we've got some direction to the applicant should he want to go down that road. Obviously, we have the CUP in front of us, so we'll move on with that. But hopefully that gives you some clarity, you know, on the roadway. When we do go to the next, I want to make sure I understand staff clearly on the two conditions that you placed out there. We would, we would need to amend to say this, or is this already in the language? I want to make sure. I thought I heard someone say we had to.
When we get to the new business item, it can be put into the motion, and if it's not put into the motion, then it will need to be amended after it's put on the table.
So the staff recommended conditions would have to be put, at least amended or put into the motion.
But yeah, if you include it in the motion, it won't have to be amended.
Okay. Okay, so does that complete questions, comments? Okay, we'll move on. And in this public hearing, with that, we'll move to new business item number two. Mr. Carbone, would you place that on the table, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution R 2021-CUP 21-00027, inclusive of the two staff recommendations, so move.
Second.
Is that enough for the recommendations? Good deal. So we've had, we've had staff report, we've had applicant as well as the public hearing and questions and comments from council, so Madam Secretary, we'll call for the vote on that.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
No, not unless we have some different.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries three to two to adopt resolution number R 2021-CUP 21-00027 with staff conditions.
Public hearing number three. Elder carrying request by Cameron Krauts, GCP commercial applicant on behalf of Sue Morrison, 2012 trust owner, for approval of a conditional use permit for an auto wash self-service at 2027 Main Street. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. This one is for a conditional use permit for auto wash self-service used within the general commercial GC district to accommodate a proposed car wash facility on approximately 5.1 acres of land located north of 2027 Main Street. The applicant intends to develop an automatic car wash facility with associated vacuum stalls. And staff did not receive any verbal or written public comments regarding this request. The property is designated as business, commercial. On the future land use plan, this is the zoning map. It shows the property currently undeveloped, Zone GC, and it's surrounded by commercial zoning from all site as well as commercial uses. And the proposed site plan reflects the layout of the proposed car wash, including location of the car wash tunnel and the vacuum stations and the stacking lanes. The next plan shows actually the stacking plan. They have plenty of stacking with this proposal. And the next slide is the landscape plan. They do propose shade trees as well as hedge rows along the perimeter of the site, the entire perimeter of the site based on staff recommendation. And we do also have elevations in the next slide, and they do show the proposed building with masonry facades on all sides. And the Planning and Zoning Commission, before I get to that, I have a few photos taken from Main Street looking at that undeveloped property from Main Street. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this and conducted a public hearing on September 20th. And the commission were in favor of the request with the staff recommended conditions, and those include two conditions. Number one is the car wash will be developed in substantial conformist to the building materials as shown by the applicant on the building elevation exhibits, and the perimeter of the subject site shall be screened by a minimum six inch continuous hedge row of evergreen shorps to screen the drive-through and vacuum stations from view of adjacent properties, and that's staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Applicants are here, so you've seen the two previous. Name an address for the record and your report. And welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Jesse McLean. 2208 West 700 South, Springville, Utah, 84663. Thank you, Mohammed, for a great staff report. I want to add some additional context and actually, first of all, I just want to commend you as, in my community back in Utah, I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission, and so I know what it takes in order to be recognized for the efforts that you've, that you've recently accomplished, and we want to do nothing but add that with this development. So I'm here on behalf of Quick Quack Car Wash, and as many of you, if you've traveled around the Houston area, you might be familiar with Quick Quack, and I think that as, as Councilmember Orlando noted, that Pearland is a community of choice, and there's a reason why we've wanted to be in Pearland for a long time, and it's because we think that we can add tremendous value and that you embody many of the characteristics and attributes that we want to, we want to demonstrate as a, as a business. So just to elaborate a little bit on Mohammed's great report, because I'm on the Planning Commission, I also know what you're looking for and, and we take that same approach when we do these developments, and so we are very much a community-minded business, and I just want to elaborate on a couple of things that we hope you'll take into consideration as you think about this. So the first one was traffic, and that's obviously a big thing. The last thing that we want to do is have collector traffic on Main Street. We want to make sure that people are off Main Street and then that they're onto the property, and so Mohammed, could you go to that, the stacking lanes that shows we have ample room to collect 43 cars there in, in the queue as they work through. Now, the nature of the business is that you're onsite no more than three to five minutes, so we never intend to have 43 cars actually, you know, sitting there at any given time. But if a big dust storm comes through and you got a lot of cars that need to get washed, then there's ample capacity that we have 43 there in the stacking, we can fit another six right outside the tunnel and then another five inside the tunnel. And so traffic, we understand, is a big deal. Another thing, we don't want any degradation or deterioration of the site, and so rather than doing asphalt, we we do all of our site paving in concrete so that it holds up over time and that we don't have patches and potholes and things like that. So traffic is a large, large component. We want a very comfortable environment and experience for the consumer, and so that's why this lot is 1.2 acres. This is not the normal standard for a car wash where you go up and, you know, you got your wand. We want to go above and beyond and change the perception of what it means to have a car wash, and so with that comes ample size to where you feel that you're comfortable. Another one, water conservation. I know that that's a precious commodity. With Quick Quack, you use 25 gallons of fresh water as compared to if you got the hose and the bucket out in your front yard, you're using over 100, and so we want to be wise stewards of the water that we use, and so we have water reclamation tanks that we have onsite, and so we put it through a series of chambers to clean the water and then recycle that. So we are definitely mitigating and being, and being wise with the water that we use. Cleanliness, I know that's a big thing. Everyone has a perception of, you know, it's a car wash, there's crap strewn all over the site, there's garbage. We'll employ 20 to 25 employees at any given time. At any given shift, we'll have four to six who are regularly taking out the trash, picking up the site, handing out towels to wipe down the windows and such. Sound mitigation, I know that's a big thing. As, as Mohammed mentioned, we want to do landscape buffers up to three feet to make sure that any additional sound. We also have, rather than, with all the vacuum stalls, each stall, rather than having an individual motor, we have one centralized motor that is contained within a concrete masonry unit, and all that sound is contained within that one unit, and that unit then supports the 16 vacuum stalls. In addition to that, we put mufflers on all the dryers, and so you're not going to have a lot of excess sound that's escaping out onto Main Street, and so we want to be conscientious of that as well. Hours of operation, this is not a 24/7. This is going to be in the summer hours, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and then 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM in the winter hours, and so this, this will be respectful of business hours as well. And then with that comes, I know that light pollution is a thing, and so during off hours, the lights will be turned off on the site. We'll have some, we'll have a marquee out front and a building on, or sod build, or a light on the building, but other than that, we want to make sure that we're not adding to any light pollution. And the last thing that I would add just is community involvement. We very much don't want to be a, come in, put in a car wash and then see you later. We're very much community-minded, both in our approach to how we develop the site, but then also how we run it. So not only being an employer to people who can work at the wash, we want to get involved early and hold fundraisers. So one of the very fun things that we're involved in is every new site at the very beginning, when we're about one to two months before opening, we will identify a family in the community in need, and we will hold a fundraiser. We'll blast all over social media and we'll have people come and, and we'll hold a fundraiser for that community, and then Quick Quack will donate or match any funds that are given by the community and will present those funds to the family at, at the ribbon cutting. So that's right off the bat, and then in addition to that, as high school teams or Little League teams or whoever it may be wants to do fundraisers, we want to be, we want to help facilitate that and be a business where those teams can help and utilize that. And so I recognize that we're talking about a conditional use permit and that you all are going to evaluate, you know, additional conditions that you want to impose. And the only reason I bring this up is that, like I said, we are community-minded and we impose on ourselves extra stringent conditions because we want to be more than just another car wash in your community, and we want to be in Pearland because this is a community of choice. So I'll turn the time back over to Mayor and answer any questions or from public comment as well. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. So we'll open this up for the public for any those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. And go to the podium, give your name and address and state your comments. Second time, second request, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. And then third and final time, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. This man. Go ahead and give your name and address for this proposed.
Valerie Hopson, 11516 Rochelle Way. I had a question. You said from 7:00 to 9:00 PM? Okay, I'm not sure if all of our car washes are open until 9:00 PM in the city of Pearland. That was just my concern. And it's 9:00 PM? That was my concern.
Okay, yeah, good concern. All right, third and final time, those wishing to speak in favor or against this proposed request. Seeing no one further, going to the podium, we'll move to city council, questions, comments, concerns? Anyone have anything?
So Mayor, I'm usually very much against car washes and gas stations. This gentleman here, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Jesse.
Jesse came in and said, I know what you're looking for, and he started hitting all of the things that I was going to bring up.
And you've been consistent.
Yes. So Jesse, I like the fact that you touched on your water reclamation plan, noise and light pollution abatement, community involvement, even touched on your hours. Question to staff, are all of, I guess, aside from maybe community involvement, these are things that we can put into the conditions. Is that something we'd have to do, or is that something that they've already put forward as part of?
Councilmember Hernandez, these were the only conditions that we were recommending for approval were what is on screen. Quick Car Car Wash has a standard within their business that they have discussed as going above and beyond, and those are for them to propose.
Okay, so if we were to Jesse superimpose these on top of what we've already recommended for conditions, would you be okay with that?
Yeah, Quick Quack has 130 locations nationwide, and this is the standard that we use all over, and so this is no different than standard operating procedures elsewhere.
Okay. Yeah, it's, I'm still on the fence. I'll listen to what the rest of my council members have to say, but typically, you know, for me, I see car washes as one of those types of businesses that if, you know, heaven forbid, I want you to be successful, but if something does happen, it's, it just seems difficult to turn that into something else in the future. And those are types of businesses that, you know, kind of give me heartburn. But I'll, that's all I've got for now, Mayor. Thank you.
Member Hernandez? If I may, I just wanted to say that the CUP approves the use of a car wash at that location. If Quick Car Wash is willing to abide by those as part of their things, that's great. But if not Quick Car Wash buys them out or somebody else takes over that spot and you need these conditions, the conditions that you wanted in order to vote for that, I would recommend that you add whatever those specific items are to the conditions. Otherwise, we would expect your vote to be different.
Right, and I would obviously take the temperature of the rest of council before doing that. Thank you for that clarification.
Member Orlando? Yeah, just a quick question for me. Something that I've talked about before is that I don't think we should just make decisions based on just kind of solely a personal preference. I think a really legitimate consideration is can something be reused, and that's why I think, for example, gas stations, it's very difficult to reuse that land. Is it, I know this is a little bit of a subjective question, but is it the opinion of staff that especially with the using concrete versus asphalt, that this is a particularly, this is a particularly difficult use to rebuild than like, say, some other kind of retail building? Is this a particularly, you know, is there especially high amount of remediation that goes into a car wash versus, say, just any other building that might get built for retail purposes?
Councilmember Orlando, I would base that off of the style. Councilmember Orlando, I would base that off of the style of building that it is, that it's, it's a tunnel, and that you'd have to build in the rest of the walls and then reconfigure the parking area to be more fitting for a commercial use. There are, of course, environmental considerations that would need to be, take place in order for a use to reuse that property. But based solely off of the exterior and, you know, the form of the building, those are the, the main considerations that I would see.
Yeah. I appreciate the clarification there. I think from my perspective, you know, this is a totally different ballpark from like a, a gas station where you have huge underground tanks, and you clearly have, you know, very noxious things of the flammability issue that we've seen even in this city. So, I think this is different. And so, and I do appreciate the thoroughness of your presentation, very clear of, your, your planning zoning background is very clear. So, I'm supportive of, of this development and appreciate your time to share all that with us.
Yeah, same here. I'm fine with the use of the car wash. You're good with these staff recommended conditions, so.
Yeah.
No need to belabor it.
I think the presentation is outstanding. But unlike Mr. Hernandez, I'm probably going to stand my ground. But thank you for coming here. I wish we had more people like you, but I'm in the car wash, we have enough camps. But I think you're great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess from what I read in here, there's, how many? Three within a two-mile radius or something like that? You're going to have a little bit of competition unless you.
Yeah. And that kind of goes, this, this is the, the perception of car washes. And this is why I kind of elaborate on all these additional conditions that we impose on ourselves, is that we don't want to be the, the age-old perception of a car wash where you show up and things are kind of scattered everywhere and it's a wand wash. This is, this is, if you're going to build around a car wash in the city of Pearland, this is what you want. And so, that's why I bring this up, so that hopefully you can kind of see beyond that, you know, that perception that you might have had historically.
So, I guess, I, I think Member Carbone and I are comfortable supporting this with the conditions laid out by staff. I guess I would ask at this point whether Member Hernandez is comfortable doing so as well, or if it would be possible to add the conditions that you want in order to get your support, because I think that's going to kind of decide which direction we go here.
Yeah, I would need the other conditions. If the rest of council was fine with that, I would put them in. Otherwise, I would be a no.
And so, the conditions would be, it sounded like you said, water reclamation, lighting?
Noise, light, pollution abatement that he talked about, and then.
Hours of operation.
Hours of operation.
Yeah.
Darren, what's the easiest way to kind of get that in? I know it's kind of a lot.
And I know you touched on those, Jesse. So, if you have those delineated somewhere to make it easier, I'm not sure if you do.
Yeah, I've got some talking points. And we want to make sure that it's, it's quantifiable and it's objective. And so, like the water reclamation, I don't know, maybe Mohammed, I submit, you know, a detail of the chambers that we have on how we go about the water reclamation. That one's, that one's a little bit more subjective, but light pollution, hours of operation, things like that, that's, that's easy.
Can I make a, can I make a suggestion for staff? We, we can finish the public hearing. I know we have new business item number three. Can we, can I ask if staff can do, we, we can move this item behind a few others in the agenda? And table it within the agenda? Not for another night, but within the agenda? That way, we can come up with some of that language tonight, and we're not doing it on the fly, which this is a one and only reading, because it's a, it's a CUP. It's not a, well, I take that back. Yeah, it's a, it's a resolution.
Yeah, this is a resolution in the CUP. And I, and I'm just see Martin nodding that he can get with the applicant and then come back.
Because I, because I, I agree. I think that's a route to go. You're willing to do that. I think that gives a different standard to the game here, which I think is, is excellent. But also want to make sure that we get that right. And anytime it's done on the fly, there's always a word or two that gets missing.
Mayor, thank you. So, within the staff, or within the applicant's packet, there's actually a list of basically Jesse's talking points. So, if we would like to make it short, I mean, I'm more than welcome to.
Yeah.
Clarify. But we could also just say that if the staff recommended condition would be that it meets the applicant's letter of intent. And of course, Darren, if you'd like.
Yeah. I, I think the key is, is whether or not it's quantifiable. You know, it's something that's not too vague, and that, that would be the concern. And I think that those are things that y'all can just get out in the lobby and probably iron those out so that we can have some level of certainty, so we can find out if somebody is actually complying with it. And then hold, if assuming it was another business that took over one day, hold them to the same conditions.
Yep, definitely. Okay, let's do it.
Okay. So, Martin, if y'all would do that, then, and especially if you can type that up, get that to Josh, when we come back and revisit it, we can actually put those up so everybody can hear, so that way council is clear on it. And we can, we can vote on this tonight, and rather than belabor it to another night. Okay? So, we'll call this public hearing number three to a close. I think that's a good way to move forward. Do we need formal action on tabling new business three, or?
If the council, because we haven't opened it already, that, that would not necessarily be required if the council agrees unanimously, that we'll just come back to it after they've done that.
With council concurrence, we'll move new business item number three to later in the agenda. All right? Y'all good with that? All right. We'll move forward to consent agenda. Let's see, A through M. Any items to be pulled from the consent agenda tonight? Seeing and hearing none. Mayor Proton, would you present consent agenda items A through M as in Mary?
This, this is weird. I'm so used to Member Orlando doing this part. I don't know what. Let's see. Uh, let's see. Yes, sir. I move that we accept consent agenda items A through M as in Mary. So moved.
We have motion in a second. Madam Secretary, would you call for the vote?
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero to adopt consent agenda items A through M.
All right. Y'all were wondering how we were going to get through a lot of this agenda. There it goes. So, moving forward in the agenda, new business continued. If I'd asked, we're going to skip item four, because that's the one we had talked about, waiting on our two council members that are absent tonight to be here in person for that out of courtesy to them. Member Cam Carr, would you place new business item number five on the table of consideration, please?
Sure. Consideration, possible action, resolution R two zero two one dash two three three. So moved.
Okay. We have motion in a second. All right. Any staff report?
No, Mayor, we'll stand by. The material that's been provided was suggested by council, and we're ready to support whatever committee, if it's formed, in their work. Thank you.
Mr. Coker, was this where you were going to do brief presentation on what this committee? So, I, I can, is that where you were going to do this?
I think it's somewhere in here. I was going to.
Okay.
I think that the last time, there was, it was suggested that I be prepared to go ahead and.
Okay. Yeah, I just, especially for the members of the public, as well as members of council. So, just to kind of set this up, as, as Mayor, since I'm not voting on this, just simply are, are providing a, members of the community, as well as the council, to come together. And they're not writing the entire ordinance. What they're going to look at is, you look at the scope, the different things that we've heard out in the community. Do we require a permit? Yes or no? Is there some kind of a revocation where that could be revoked in an appeal process? Yes or no? Inspection requirements, safety elements, we've heard from those types of things. Occupancy, we don't want a hundred people in a home. For example, how many per room, that type of thing. Any specific prohibitions we'd like to see and hear in a regulation? Neighbor notification, so if they've had complaints, then, then there are, you know, how do they interact with their neighbors? We've talked about parking, we've talked about noise, we've talked about some of these types of things. And that would be kind of what this committee is just going to roll their sleeves up and kind of say, and pick and choose. We've had, and, and this is something, I don't know that we have to reinvent the wheel. There's many ordinances around the state that we can look at. There's language around the state with each one of these provisions that we can look at. And so, what I'd envisioned was this group would meet, hopefully, and come up with options for the council, okay? By the end of the year, all of this would come to the council as the options, and here's why we're choosing this option over this option. Then it's opened up to the council to wrestle with those options, but would understand why those options are there, instruct the city attorney to draw up the legal documents for adoption of an ordinance. And hopefully, in the first quarter of the year, we would have the ordinance adopted. So, in, in a very succinct manner, that's the idea. This isn't meant to take anything away from all the members of council, because you'll ultimately have your hands and fingers all over it and have the opportunity to weigh in on it. And so, as by way of committee membership, myself, Member Hernandez, and Member Perez, Manny Patel, who is a hotelier in our community, is also a member of our Convention and Visitors' Bureau Board. So, he would bring that aspect to it. And then I've asked resident John Lamson, who's here tonight, to be a, a party to this. Resident in our community, has an STR either next door or across the street, knows the, the effects of an STR right there in his neighborhood, so can speak to it, but also know John to be very level-headed and, and to the point, will be fair. So, I offered that tonight, and I asked our city attorney to do a brief presentation on short-term rentals and to help understand that not only the members of the, of the committee, but also council, as well as members of the, of the public, to understand the framework and what's out there, what we can and can't do towards short-term rentals. Okay? There's some, some laws out there, as well as court cases and what it is we can and can't do. So, with that, Darren, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, members of the public this evening. I'm going to try to keep this as short as possible, so if, if y'all could refrain from asking questions until I finish slide number fifty-two tonight. And then, I'm just kidding. Okay, yeah, not fifty-two slides. I'm actually, I mean, I could sit here and we could talk a long time about this tonight, obviously, but that's, that's going to be for some of these other things to occur later on and, and meeting with the group and, and trying to develop the processes of the county, that the city council would like to, to move forward with. So, tonight, the, there's actually only nine slides this evening. So, it's going to be very brief, but I just wanted to sort of give a little bit of a picture about what's happened in the state of Texas with respect to short-term rentals, because it's, it's done nothing but create more confusion for local governments and for residents. And, and then also talk a little bit briefly, because our, our state legislature has not really stepped up to the plate to, to try to do anything, to try to develop some consistent rules. So, that being said, I'm going to go ahead and just go to the next slides here. We're going to talk about water STRs very briefly, legal issues, and then what is the Texas case law? That's where I'm going to spend the most time on those three slides. And then regulatory efforts, and then what do we do when we have a really bad problem that some of the residents have come and spoken about before? And how do we handle that, what we call nuisance abatement, when it gets to be that bad? So, if you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So, the legal issues that come up in these cases were, because numerous cities have tried to regulate short-term rentals and trying to figure out, what are we going to do? And many cities have taken different efforts and different tools to try to regulate. And some of those cities have been challenged. Many cities haven't been challenged. But as you can imagine, the cities where they are challenged are going to be cities where tourism is high, and there's a lot more at stake. And that, as you'll see that in those cases in just a moment. But these are some of the legal issues that you see challenged when somebody does challenge. It's going to be on constitutional level, zoning issues, infringing, using, basically using zoning regulations that can lead to a constitutional challenge, and somebody's right to use, free use of their property. Unfair competition, equal protection issues, private property rights issues, economic liberty, person's ability to have, this is my property, I have the right to use my property. And then the government's trying to infringe on my right to do so. And then, of course, the nuisance that can come with that. So, these are the types of issues that usually show up in the legal issue, in the cases that come before us. You can go ahead and go to the next slide. So, what are STRs? Did, uh, let me see. Can you go back one? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, did, I skipped, I think we skipped one. If you can go, yeah, product of, yeah, what are STRs? It's a product of a shared economy. That's a term that's usually used for things of this nature. And VRBO, Airbnb, those are the ones you see advertised frequently on TV. But simply put, for purposes of tonight, a short-term rental, it's generally defined as a rental of a residence or rental residential structure, or a portion of a residence or residential structure for a period of less than thirty days. And you're saying, how, why is it defined that ways thirty days? Well, that goes back to chapter one fifty-six of the tax code. And chapter one fifty-six, which is the hotel occupancy tax, it actually defines a short-term rental in there. And that's where we have the ability to charge a hotel occupancy tax, for instance, on hotels and even residences, if they rent out their properties to somebody for less than thirty days. And we do have a hotel occupancy tax ordinance, because chapter one fifty-six is an enabling statute. It allows cities to do this if you pass an ordinance. We've passed an ordinance that allows us to do so. Okay, you can go to the next one now. All right. Texas case law. The first, the, what I consider the first case that really came to light in Texas with regard to short-term rentals, it's called Tar versus Timberwood Park Owners Association. As you can see, the date of this case, it came out of the Texas Supreme Court in two thousand eighteen. And just, I'll just briefly run through this. So, you had a property owner who purchased the home for his own use in two thousand twelve, and then he gets transferred in two thousand fourteen, decides, guess what I'm going to do? I'm going to rent out my home, but not on a long-term basis, I'm going to rent it out on a short-term basis, to vacation. As you can see here, he's in San Antonio, higher demand for that type of property there. The HOA came in and argued that you're violating your deed restrictions, that this is, that you, your property can only be used for residential purposes. And then the Texas Supreme Court ultimately ruled in favor of the property owner. And they said that so long as the occupants who are there, whether they're short-term renters or whatever, use the home for a residential purpose, no matter how short-lived it may be, such use does not violate the restrictive covenants of the HOA. And the court determined that the renters of the house were residents regardless of how short-term they were there. So, clearly, as you can see, when this case came out in two thousand eighteen, the Airbnb and the VRBOs were like, yes, this is a big victory in their favor. Then, we fast forward now to two thousand nineteen, we get a case that came out of the Texas appellate court. It's Zadatari versus the city of Austin. So, we went, now we're going from San Antonio, now we're going to Austin. As a result of the rate, out of the Texas Supreme Court case, in the Tar case, cities started adopting their, some regulations, because they were like, hey, we got to get a hold and get it, get a hold of this problem. So, then you had a group of property owners that challenged portions of Austin's regulations. You had elimination of, what they proposed to do was eliminate non-owner, that was referenced this evening, where somebody's, it's an investment property for somebody and they're renting it out. So, non-owner occupied STRs by two thousand twenty-two. The city of Austin wanted to eliminate those. They wanted prohibit assembly at the STRs between ten PM and seven AM, prohibit outdoor assemblies of more than six unrelated adults and ten related adults between seven AM and ten PM, and prohibit more than six unrelated adults or ten related adults from being present on the property at any time. The state attorney general for Texas came in and intervened in the case, and, but on the side of the short-term renters and the short-term rental properties, and supported them and filed an amicus brief and intervened. The trial court granted the city's motion for summary judgment. So, they ruled in favor, at the trial court, they ruled in favor of the city. Then the property owners and the state of Texas both appealed that. And the appellate court ruled in favor of the short-term property owners. They said it, that the city of Austin's ordinance unconstitutionally violated the property right, the lease property, unconstitutionally infringed on a fundamental right to assemble, and the city failed to narrowly tailor the regulations to achieve a governmental interest. That's an important issue we can talk about some other time. But the Texas Supreme Court ultimately denied the petition for review. So, what happened is, in this case, the short-term rentals won on the appeal, and then the city of Austin appealed that to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court denied the review. So, what does that mean? That simply means they did not really. That simply means they did not really have any issues with what happened at the appellate court. That was sort of a message from the Supreme Court on their feelings on this issue. Okay? So now we fast forward to 2021, a very recent case. This is Draper versus the City of Arlington. Again, it's an appellate court case. And, and this is now Dallas. So this is the City of Arlington. City of Arlington has short-term rental ordinances and standalone and zoning ordinances. And they, what they did is they established short-term rental zones near entertainment venues, sort of pods that you would have throughout the city and said, if you're going to do a short-term rental, you can be in these zones here. And then they actually created a buffer around those, about a one-mile buffer where you couldn't be in those areas either. And, well, you could, they limited the number in the buffer area and they, they limited the number in the zones. Anyway, long story short, short-term rental plaintiffs argued that the ordinance violated their constitutional right of substantive due process and protection from governmental interference. The trial court ruled in favor of the City of Arlington and the appellate court affirmed. Now, this was the first time you actually see an appellate court coming in and actually siding with the property owners. Why did they do that here but not in the other cases? Well, the court gave deference to the city because their arguments were based on studies and support findings. One of the things you have to have when you have a governmental regulation, there has to be a nexus. What governmental interest is this government trying to accomplish? And is there a nexus between what you're trying to accomplish? And it's not just an arbitrary rule. Well, in this case, the Arlington had studies to prove what was, what was happening in their city, whether it be crime statistics or whatever that may be to support their regulation. And in this case, the court gave a lot of deference to that and said, we're going to support the property owners in this. So now that creates the big question is, now that this case, if it's appealed, in this case by the short-term rental community, if they appeal that, will the Texas Supreme Court grant the petition for review? Because this sort of contradicts the two prior cases that I just mentioned, Zadatari and Tar. So the, the legal landscape in Texas, as you can see, it's uncertain right now. But don't get me wrong, there are many communities and there are many short-term rental ordinances, and many of them have been challenged. And I think council member Little explained probably why that's the case in some communities, why there aren't challenges last time. And, and I think he was accurate on that. Talking, it, it costs money to, to do these lawsuits, take a case like this through an appellate court to a Supreme Court. And typically you see communities, again, Dallas, San Antonio, Austin, very big demand for these types of rental units in those communities. And then, of course, we are close to a larger community, and so there is a, a demand, but not as big here as, for instance, in some others. All right. I apologize for the long explanation on those three court cases, but I thought it was important to at least understand what, what we're dealing with. So regulatory efforts, again, what can be done? What types of things can you put into ordinances? And these are some of the, the different tools that you'll see. Some cities will actually come in and do an absolute prohibition and basically say, challenge somebody to sue them. They'll use zoning, registration permitting, licensing, inspections for safety, things of that nature, occupancy limits, vehicle limits, advertising rules, safety brochures, notification of registration to neighboring properties. In other words, if you're, if you come in and licensed, you got to give notice to your neighbors who you are and give, for instance, possibly give contact numbers and complaint lines and things of that nature. And then the ordinances like this typically will have some type of revocation and appeal procedure for, or any registration, licensing and permitting. There are others. I, I just wanted to give you all an idea of what you see in the different ordinances. Some of them are very basic, some of them are very complex. But the, again, these are just some of the tools. Okay, go to the next one. So the last, this is the last slide, and what I want to mention here is, is what happened more recently. Whether you have an ordinance or not, you can have somebody come in and register, you can deny their permit. But if they continue to do what they're doing despite that they don't have the right to do it, but they continue to do it, we, the city's recourse through that ordinance is very limited at that point. Then you have to step outside of that. And we do have a tool, we can actually file a civil lawsuit against the, an individual who's a violator of that. And that, we use what's called, it's Texas Local Government Code, chapter 54. And what it allows us to do is file a civil lawsuit for people who violate city ordinances. And when you do that, we're entitled to a couple of forms of relief. One would be injunctive relief, where a court would come in and direct them to stop doing this, okay? And issue an order to stop doing it. The other thing we're entitled to is civil penalties, up to $1,000 per day for each day that the person's violating. More recently, we did do a case and, on Verona, and the court reissued an order, and in that particular instance, have issued a fine right now of civil penalties of $30,000 and have ordered the property owner to stop. And in that particular case, if they don't do so by a certain date, there will be $78,000 added to that. And, and then, of course, failure to comply would render the individual possibly in contempt of a case. So the, these are, these are tools that you have, but I just want to make sure everybody understands, a short-term rental ordinance doesn't address a blatantly bad landlord. We have to use other tools for that, and that's what we've done more recently. I just want to make sure that's clear. So hopefully this background information was, was beneficial to the council and to the public. And I'd be happy to answer any questions y'all may have about that, but I know you'll have other information to discuss as part of this item.
Yeah, I think that's a good starting point for, you know, what we have to put together. It's not going to be a be-all, end-all type of draft, it's just not. It's not going to take complete care of all the bad actors that are out there. And I will say this, there are, there are plenty of people who are doing short-term rentals that we may never, just if you go down the street, you'd never know they exist. They're doing it the right way, it's quiet, it's someone coming in for, you know, a night or two before they hit a cruise down south, or they're coming in because they're a patient in the medical center, and they just want to spend a few nights away from the city rather than where they get all their treatment done and everything else down there. And so I think the vast majority of, of STRs probably fit into that. Unfortunately though, and I said this in a previous meeting, whether it's a football game or a basketball game or out in society, laws and rules are written for the bad actors. It's the bad actors that cause these things to have to come in effect, and it causes everybody else to have to follow those same rules. And so, so with that, that, that's where this is meant to get to, where we can put some sort of regulations around it. And the question ultimately, not only for the committee, but, but for the council, is how stringent? Do you want it super stringent? Do you want it to be middle-of-the-road? I mean, there's ordinances out there and language and various, and, and several of these ordinances that are kind of middle-of-the-road, or some are real lenient and some are real restrictive. Okay? And then we have to weigh out, if we go super restrictive, do we open ourselves up for legal challenges and that on the back end? And then what do we want to do? And so, again, tonight, you know, this is, is simply asking for a, a committee to be set aside literally between now, probably in the end of the year. Let's take a, end of the calendar year, not fiscal year, I mean, just make sure I say that, calendar year to help put some of this together, bring that back to council, where we would then certainly wrestle with it and then give direction to legal staff to write an ordinance. Member Owens.
Yeah, you know, I understand we're coming in talking about the, you know, the dollar amount, not paying a hot tax and hotel motel tax and what have you. The other side of the coin is, I mean, you know, we, we spend a lot of time up here coming in and, and zoning areas for residential. When this goes in, the one location there, whatever, then that tears that apart because you've got commercial business in a residential area. And I know what we looked at down there off the street where I went to the last time in green tea, you know, and the party that was going on, the people walking up and down the roads, the roads blocked off of people up and down the street through there. I mean, that's, that was a big concern. And then, you know, when you look at it, then the houses next to it and what have you, when they know that this is there, all right, the value of that property goes down. Now, you know, and, and to me, you know, if, if that's the case, then, okay, is there anything that we can do to put in here where the property owner there gets a, a lower rate on the tax? Not, not from us, but from, you know, the county paying you tax, which you go out and buy, say, a $250,000 home, then you have a B&amp;B, Nux T, and, and party like was going down to the street down there that time, that nobody is going to come out and pay the same thing just to have a place there, you know, to live there. Now, they may come in and give you $200,000 for it, so you lost, you know, $50,000 on it just because of this down here. But I think, you know, my main concern is, is, you know, we spent a lot of time up here in, over the past years and even in, in the future, coming in with the planning and zoning and talking about this and, and putting it there in zoning areas for residential and zoning areas for commercial and what have you. So it, to me, it's more than a dollar amount. It's how it impacts, you know, we have them in green tea. And so, I mean, it, it impacts the people there and the value of your homes when you have something like that. So I hope during this thing, when you've got your committee together, let's, let's look at something in, into that area there as maybe being able to do something, not just the, you know, coming in and, because we never know how many people, you know, how many homes are like that, but.
Right. Well, and I, I think that's, I think it's a good point. Also, I would hope that as a council, we've wrestled with this, we're spending a lot of time around it, that when the next legislative session comes around and we put together a legislative agenda, you know, part of that with the legislative agenda is that we understand the zoning in our city. We recognize the zoning in our city, and we want the legislature to recognize our zoning as well. Because when the courts rule, well, this is a residential use, yet, I mean, we've, we've heard from one of our HOA members tonight about, that's certainly not a residential use in your neighborhood. And so there's got to be, I think, legislative action to help us. Okay? Because at the end of the day, the court, the court basically said, we don't care what your zoning says. Oh, in fact, we agree, this is a residential use, without looking at all the bad boys that are out there causing some of these problems. So we, we're going to have to need, need our legislated folks to help us ultimately, because I think it's going to continue to come down, but it's got to start somewhere. So open it up to the council.
Yeah, Mayor, first I want to say thank you. This is the second time we've talked about putting together a committee, and I know that you've kind of got that authority in the charter. And so coming to council and having us kind of as a group ratify that, I think is, is important to get, you know, our input and the buy-in from everybody. So that's, that's number one. I, I think my issue with looking at this kind of off the bat, and I've, I've mentioned this to you, is just kind of the timeline of this, I, I would rather something be before us to consider sooner than January of next year. I think that Darren did a wonderful job tonight of giving us eight regulatory efforts that we could consider. I think there are lots of sample ordinances, excerpts that we can pull from that have been provided. We can go through, and I, I think whomever is looking at this, I think we've also got two relevant committees that are charged already, I think that could maybe be tasked with a portion of this. I just think that from a timeline perspective, I would like to see something come a little bit sooner. That would be really my biggest, I don't want to say concern, but my biggest point of feedback on this and so.
I would, I would agree and hope so. I just also want to be smart about holiday season when it hits. That's all. I, I just, I know that hits and it, it is what it is. But I would agree, and certainly being on it, and we, we can push that faster, harder if we need to. I would agree, and I just, I just know once Thanksgiving hits, the rest of that year, it goes by pretty quick and it's hard to get everybody together. And that's five weeks away.
Yeah, and I just was kind of just thinking through the, and I don't know to what degree, like, I've been thinking about this for a while, but I don't know to what degree P&amp;Z has ever looked at this or CVB has kind of, you know, so I think there's got to be something that we can pull from and kind of move this along, but I can understand the concerns.
Thanks, Mayor. Now, I, I think the committee is a great idea. The only person I think is potentially missing would be Joseph Coza on there. We're going to hear from him one way or the other, might as well hear him in the committee.
Yeah, I asked, I told Coza who, who I had on here, and he, he liked the committee. So, but I, I mean, I, that's up to you guys if, and if he would accept it, but I know he, he liked who we had on here.
Yeah, absolutely agree that we need to have a committee here, kind of jumping off of member Hernandez's point. I, I think kind of the, the thing for me is just, what is the precedent of establishing, of outsourcing some of this to other committees versus what we have existing? I think we have the CVB, which has already looked into this to some degree, and I think the ultimate committee, as you alluded to earlier, Mayor, is, of course, the eight of us up here on this dais who were elected by the people. And so I, my kind of proposal, I think, to address both of those would be something like having the CVB review this, you know, at, at their earliest possible convenience within the next month or so, and then to come back to us for a joint workshop so that we could do that process that you said of the, kind of mixing it up with, with that. But I, I think we have this established committee that can handle that. And I would propose, again, probably to Darren's point of the narrowly tailored nature of this, and I think narrowly tailored protects us legally, but it also, to the concerns addressed here, helps us with the speed. I would say that it's really kind of two big priorities. One is on the registration and tax collection, and the second is on what we're all really the most upset about, which is nuisance property mitigation. Well, we've talked about that for STRs. I, I know and have heard about nuisance properties in longer-term rentals. I know about nuisance properties that don't advertise on Airbnb and VRBO, but yet they're renting out to parties. All of those things disrupt the quality and the fabric of life in our neighborhoods and aren't acceptable. And it, I, I think most people, that's, that's what they're most upset about, including me. So I, I would, my mandate to, you know, if, if there was the support to do that to the CVB before coming back for a joint workshop with us, would be to really home in on the registration and tax collection as well as the nuisance property mitigation. I think there's a list, both in the, both in this item and in the presentation that Darren shared, that would provide ample starting space, as well as Mr. Coza's shared plenty of draft resolutions that we could also add in there. So I've spent a lot of time looking at those. I know other members have as well. And I think that we could come up with an expedited response to this before the end of the year even. And so that's, that's going to be kind of where I fall in this. But absolutely, we need a committee, we can debate the best way to get there, but that's just my two cents on that.
I'm going to build off of what member Orlando said. I think January is just too long. Ms. Legg, I, I remember, I remember seeing you, you were at our last meeting, this is the end of September, God, it's time's flying. And I remember what you said, and this is for you, your area where you live, it's peace, it's retirement. And, and then I just, I thought about that. I have three kids under the age of four, and what would it be like having a bad actor like that day after day after day? The weekends are supposed to be a time of respite as a family, how crappy that would be, having a party with God knows what in the street and bad actors all over the place, no parking anywhere. I think January is probably too long. Ms. Flores, I heard what you said. I go to work too. Understand what you said. How do, how do you, how does that work of, I have to be up at 6:00 AM and they show up at 1:00 AM from their flight and God knows who's there? And I don't want to put you through 90 days more misery. So I, I hear what the committee says, I, I hear, Ms. Hodgson, you live close to me, I understand what you're saying. We live in a community that was residential, we bought a residential house just like everybody else. I, I think, Mayor, that the committee is probably a little, little long for me. I, I think we need to have action now. City attorney has seen all the documentation provided by members of the community. I think there's a clear path, I think there's probably going to be some kind of permit process to this. I think the committee is here, sitting up here, I think they were elected. I think we know the issues, I think we're ready to act. I, I'd like to go back to the CVB part with member Orlando. I was ready to vote on registration tonight, actually, if the two members hadn't come, I think we would have done a minor amendment, probably pass that. Right, I think the taxation piece is one thing, I think the enforcement piece is the number one thing. And, and for me frankly, the CVB's been kicking this can down the road for two years. People on, having nuisance issues, I've been dealing with this for a decade. They don't need to wait 90 days more longer. They need to get this resolved, I would like to say, by this month. We have the ability to call a special meeting relatively quickly or workshop within, what, 72 hours?
It's the standard 72-hour notice for a meeting, yes.
Yeah, I, I would like to make a motion possibly with the support that we, we kick this to the CVB, let them go have their meeting as soon as possible, have that come back, and we call a special meeting and a workshop. We get Mr. Lamson, Ms. Flores, Ms. Legg and others to come out there and be privileged speakers. to come out there and be privileged speakers. Come say your piece, what's good, not good. Some of the proposals we've had address parking, where you've got people parking all over. They only get three spaces. Some of the other proposals had, if you screw up and you're a bad actor and you're over permitting, your permit gets revoked, and you've got to come back a year later. And the city manager or staff member gets to decide. I think all those proposals are there. I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel. We've just got to find the wheel that works for Pearland.
Which is exactly what this committee is designed to do. And it's interesting that we're arguing over 90 days when we've got two people who want to move forward tonight on writing ordinance, who voted against registration ordinance, and is kicking this down the road even further, when we had the opportunity to get the registration in place probably 90 days ago, but instead, we're now concerned about an ordinance in 90 days. And we've got two members that are up here that talked about and actually voted against registration. And now, we want to move as quickly as possible. And I'm all about moving quickly. I'm also trying to be real in trying to make that happen, so we don't make a mistake. Okay, I can put in here November. I can put in here the end of October. But I also know there's members that voted against registration that now want to move at light speed to make this happen. Understand public rhetoric means something.
Yeah, and I think that's entirely consistent with the position that these are two separate issues. I think that's entirely consistent with the position that collecting taxes from the guy on Verona isn't doing a whole lot to improve the quality of these people's lives. So I honestly reject the idea that, as I have rejected consistently the entire time, that we can't get tougher on enforcement now, that that shouldn't be the priority now, and that the registration piece is a more ancillary concern to the thing that's affecting people here, the thing that has brought people out, other than the hoteliers. But the thing that has brought mom and dad out, who are sitting there as condoms are thrown over the fence and as drunk girls go and knock on their door, isn't that these folks are registered or not registered, or that they're remitting some amount of hot tax to our CBB. It's that it's hurting these people's quality of life. And I've been saying that from day one, and I'll continue to say that. And I think that I hear from those people who live in our community, who voted for me to make these kind of decisions. So I think there's a timing component, and I think there's also a component of, we have the committees that are established in our charter to deal with this, and I think we should let them deal with this. It's as easy as that for me. I think every single person up here is on the same page, that we want to crack down on this and do the right thing. I've simply laid out what I've been laying out for months, which is that let's have a strict regime to target bad actors. And in fact, I think I'm being very consistent with that going forward. I don't care how or why, or you're being a bad actor, whether that's because you're coming in from another state, or because you're coming in from the University of Houston, or because you're just an asshole who lives in that neighborhood. Regardless, I think we should have these strict standards, and I've been saying that the entire time. So that is my proposal. Let's use the organs of government that we have right now to effectuate the change that we all up here want, and we can go from there. I think there's going to be hashing, plenty of hashing out to do when we have the joint session. But yeah, I think that's our best and most straightforward path, and I've been really consistent about that the whole time.
And you have, this is the first time anybody's proposed actually moving forward with an ordinance. We haven't had two people present an ordinance. We haven't had two people present the idea to move forward with an ordinance. I know we've had talks about it for two years, okay? And I'm going to recognize that, okay? And that's the first time-
I've actually requested to bring forward ordinances, though, and been told, like, hey, this is already in progress. Like, we can't do that. So I've tried to do that.
And I recognize-
I respected our timeline and our process, and so that's why I'm using now to interject my desired outcome.
And I think that's good. I just want to make sure. I'm trying to advance the ball forward. There were Owens?
I was going to tell Luke, he just shot down the prayer that Tony Dunn was saying in his work. But no. And I think, Kevin, you're right. We need this committee. Let's go ahead and get it going. Go ahead and do it as fast as we can get it going and do it. That's one of the concerns I know you had, is bringing it to the table with seven different council members, seven different agendas, would never get it done. So let's go ahead and pull the trigger, and let's go and get it done.
Clay, did you have something?
Yeah, I don't want to wade into your deliberations, but I do have to point out that, to me, the CBB board and looking at their mandate from what I can tell, I mean, it's to promote tourism. And I don't really see the nexus with the neighborhood issues and the other things that Mr. Coker are resolved about. I just don't know if that, to me, if I was, without asking to make a recommendation, I don't know if that's a viable board and the people, you know, their interests represent what you're talking about.
Would you prefer go to planning and zoning?
I'll just say the CBB doesn't make a ton of sense for me. I would say planning and zoning is an option. You know, that's more, it's potential, but I'd have to think about that more.
I don't know where I lost the floor, but somehow I lost the floor and didn't finish all my thoughts, but okay. I hear the city manager's point of view. The CBB has a distinct interest on the taxation piece. I think they should have their meeting and what is their proposal, and just bring that. I think a joint public hearing, whether it's planning and zoning or with the CBB, I think we can get this done. I apologize that we are going at light speed, but for people who are going for 10 years dealing with this issue, pushing for another 90 days just seems a long time. And I've seen enough ordinances. I know what I'm looking for. I'm ready to go. I don't need 90 days of deliberation. I need something to vote on. I kind of know what I'm looking for. So, Member Orlando, if you want to make a motion for something different than what this is, I'm happy to second.
Yeah, I think we all have a good perspective. I mean, my motion, I guess, then would be that at their, at the earliest convenience of the planning and zoning board, that they have an expedited meeting where they consider this issue, and then at the next earliest ability, that is then brought for a joint special session or joint workshop, or whatever the terminology is we'd want to use, for joint consideration and discussion with the intent of coming up with a piece of an ordinance that we can all support.
I just want to be clear. Timelines are being tossed around like nothing tonight. And I just want to make sure I understand. I will not prepare an ordinance on a quick timeline just to get an ordinance done. I will do an ordinance that's thoroughly vetted and that is appropriate to the law. But right now, I'm hearing a lot of pressure. We've got to have something done before the end of the year. And I would just highly recommend against that, because that just seems very reactionary as opposed to well that out process. So that's just my two cents.
City Attorney, we're asking to have a meeting.
Yeah, I think that was my interpretation.
Yeah, we're not asking-
That is not what I've heard this evening.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. What I'm talking about, not is, don't have a meeting by January. I'm asking this committee to complete its work and recommendations back to this body by the end of the year, not a meeting. So now we're changing and morphing to the planning and zoning, having a meeting before the end of the year on it, and a joint meeting on it?
Still have to think of the floor. But, City Attorney, what I think we're asking is, we need to be able to call the hearing with the other body to decide what is deliberative. And then at the end of that meeting, whether it's a one-hour meeting, a two-hour meeting, we have workshops for very important items like the budget, drainage, CIP. Have a workshop, and then you get these seven people on this board saying, this is what we want. I know what I want. It sounds like a couple of these guys know what they want. And then when you guys hear four people say, this is what we want, and does this work? And are there other people? That's what I'm asking for. This is saying, there's no saying, we're going to have one meeting, two meetings, three meetings. It's, we're going to have something by January. I want to have a workshop, and I want to go a little faster. That's me. That's not everybody else. This member over here, I think, says he wants to have a hearing, too. I don't understand how, we're not talking drafting an ordinance and whipping-
Okay, well, then there's definitely some mixed signals that have been shared this evening, because I heard specific language about, want something adopted before the end of the year. And, yeah, I just don't think that's really probably likely for a variety of reasons. One, the number of meetings we're going to have between now and then, and to get that feedback and get that input, because then it's going to take preparation of the ordinance, and that does take time. So I just want to make sure, clear up any confusion, if there was any confusion there.
I'm comfortable with that. I think there's two issues, one of which is the timing issue, and the second issue is just philosophically, how do we think that we should bubble up ordinances in this, from this body? And my opinion is, we should have a very strong preference towards existing boards and committees, and then we should integrate that in, where ultimately, the people who are most accountable to people experiencing these issues are the ones making those decisions, and that's being deliberated very openly, transparently up here on a dais, lit up, streamed out on YouTube. That's my preference. And so regardless of the timing issue, that would be my stance. I think the timing issue, if we can get it done faster, that'd be great. Regardless, I would want, I philosophically, regardless of the issue with certain very narrow exceptions, regardless of the other council members or mayor, that would be how I would want to resolve this, and that's why that's the course of action that I'm proposing.
I mean, we can, Member Hernandez and I were talking that, you know, the question was, if we went with the committee that I've put together here, why not put a member of the planning and zoning on it? This is not a planning and zoning issue. This is an enforcement issue. It's not a planning and zoning issue. This is, in fact, our zoning laws don't even address SDR.
And if that's the position, then we can just bring a workshop up here and do it with the council directly would be my position.
And I think that would be totally out of control with 10 different directions, 10 different ideas. What I'm talking about is, this committee is not forming and passing an ordinance. They're simply putting on the table a first draft, a first blush of what we would then wrestle with, okay? That is what we're talking about. It does have a member of the CBB as a part of it, a hotelier who's on the CBB board. You talked about the CBB. It's got a member of the CBB board. I have no problem putting a member of the planning and zoning on it. So we touched that base. I think what you're talking about, what I'm talking about as far as the timeline is concerned, is very similar as far as timing. And of the members, three are duly elected, yes. And then ultimately, this gets vetted and discussed in this chamber with everybody looking, and ultimately, hopefully, passing an ordinance that we can then enforce. So I have no problem, Member Hernandez, putting a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission on here. I don't have a member in hand tonight. I think we can make it open, and we can, you know, slot a member. I mean, we trust our planning and zoning members to be on the commission. I think we would be happy with any of them to be on it. And so I have no problem with that if that's the way we want to go.
Mayor, and I completely agree with that. I mean, there's been political gamesmanship with this forever, and we're seeing it more tonight. We can't agree on how we're going to talk or meet about writing an ordinance with the tempers that are up here. And so, yeah, I think the best way to get a solid, well-thought-out ordinance is, as you've outlined this committee, at least get a draft to us that we can then hammer out. Because I can't imagine what the meeting would look like if we started from the beginning.
Mayor, I'm just, the people elected us, and you're, I think, there's an intimation that we can't figure this out, and I just don't agree there. We've had enough time.
Don't put words in my mouth, please.
Understood. There's discussion that there's a lot of opinions that we can't come together. And I think that's not the case. I just feel, we've been elected. People trust our judgment. I know where I'm at here. We need something that enforces, that takes care of parking, that takes a permitting process, and that does not allow bad actors to continue to be bad actors. There's nothing controversial about that at this point. I just feel like we're the ones that are going to end up being responsible for this. I'd like to have a say on it. I'm not on this committee.
You will.
I'm not.
Wait a minute.
Wait, wait, Mayor. I'm still, I still have the floor. Mayor, I still have the floor here. I apologize, but I still have the floor.
No, you said you won't have a say. I'm correcting you.
Okay, thank you for that correction. I won't be sitting at the table when they are putting the initial body of this together, and that doesn't work for me. And that really doesn't work for the people, I think, trusted me with their vote. And so I wanted to come back here. Let's have a meeting on a day that works for all of us. Let's have a two-hour meeting, special hearing. Let's have invited guests that want to come and can speak at length beyond five minutes. Let's just get this out and done. I don't understand. It seems we're making this harder.
And if I could, if I could just jump in here, too. I don't think there's political gamesmanship so much as there's a difference of opinion, which is fine, which is what I think we want of our leaders, to have different opinions and deliberate and come to an outcome. So I certainly haven't taken anything personally and hope that my colleagues have not either, but I have a difference of opinion about the best mechanism and who should ultimately be responsible for putting these rules into place. And I think that's, I think that's air and healthy disagreement to have. So my motion would be to, for this to go before the Planning and Zoning Committee at their earliest convenience, and for, after they have had the chance to mull over it, for them to come forward before the council in a joint workshop to discuss this. Clearly, there's very different opinions here, and I think there's an opinion that everybody kind of wants to be involved from the ground floor, because I think there's very different philosophies at play here. So that's my motion. If I have a second, again, if that's not clear, Darren, that it would go to planning and zoning, and then come to our body for a joint workshop.
What is the motion again?
That we would make an amendment to the currently, the current proposal, so that the committee in question is comprised initially of the Pearland Planning and Zoning Board, and is, or Planning and Zoning Commission, and is then carried over into a joint workshop between the Planning and Zoning Commission and the entirety of the Pearland City Council.
Really quickly, before I second that, that is how we used to do things, right? There used to be a joint public meeting with P and Z and the council, prior to us splitting that apart.
Yes, for, that's the way we handle things for zoning changes, yes.
I'm going to second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend, to amend the motion that's on the table. Any questions or comments about the amendment? It's going away from the committee here and putting it in the hands of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So I have maybe a question on this. Sorry, what do you, you want to go?
No. We had a motion for committee in the beginning.
Correct.
What have we added to that at this point? Planning and zoning, or?
They're wanting to do away with the committee that I recommended and have it go to planning and zoning only. And then planning and zoning bring that to the-
Now, let me, you know, we've been talking this, what, we're in 45 minutes, just on a, using his word. I'm not going to say it, the committee, you know, putting this down, and this was the two empty chairs right here, and one's a talker. And so, you know, we'll be for a long time. You know, I think, you know, as it is right now, that we should go ahead and just do what we're going to do in the committee, get that settled in there, and then bring it back. All of us, whatever you bring back, everybody's going to have something to say about it. Maybe adding or taking or whatever.
Right. So what is on the table right now is a motion to amend that, not do the committee, but send it to planning and zoning. You have a motion, if I understand correctly, of Mr. Orlando, and a second of Mr. Kamkar, to not do the committee, but send it to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning would kick it around. We would then have a joint workshop with planning and zoning and the city council, and figure out how we go forward from there. And I missed that. That was in my words. I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Mayor, can you say that one more time, the second part? I understand we want to kick it to planning and zoning. What was the second part on that?
And they would come back and have a joint session, as I understand it, of a joint session with the city council and planning and zoning to discuss-
To get forward. When would be the next planning and zoning meeting? If we wanted to do this, would we call a special meeting for that?
So I guess I didn't get my question asked and answered. That was the motion, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But just, yes, sir. Sorry about that. When is the next, when could we call that meeting? When is that in the regular order? And then if we wanted to call a special meeting, could we call that?
Call the special meeting of-
For a P and Z, like, if we wanted to expedite that, could they do that as early as this week? So that way, we could get this thing moving?
Well, first of all, no, because they still have to comply with the Open Meetings Act. And it's going to be very challenging for them to meet. They would have to meet on Friday this week if they were going to do a special meeting, if you want the P and Z to meet on a Friday.
When's the regular meeting for that?
The regular meeting is October 18th, and then the next regular meeting after that is November 1st.
So then next Monday.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to amend what's on the table. I want to get to a vote for that, okay? Because that's what's on the table. So what we're voting on is not the committee here, but to send it to planning and zoning, have a joint meeting with planning and zoning, city council and planning and zoning working out this ordinance together, rather than a committee, okay? So with that, Adam Secretary, I want to-
Wait, hold on. I thought, I'm so sorry. I thought it was that planning and zoning has a meeting, and then- I thought it was that Planning and Zoning has a meeting and then we have a subsequent joint public. So that would be potentially, they would meet on the 18th and then we meet on the 25th. So we could potentially, the 25th, is that?
We could call a special meeting next week.
I have no idea at this point. I don't have a calendar in front of me.
A little bit lost.
I don't know if I'm in town. I don't know if I've got a piece of business that I gotta deal with in my personal life.
I guess also what, what would be the difference if we had this committee or if it went to Planning and Zoning and we just had the members that were on the committee listed to join Planning and Zoning for their meeting? I mean, what, what would the difference be? I'm just curious.
People. Can I offer, the P and Z also has their business that they need to conduct on the 18th, so.
But I think this is also like a very important item, like the important item. I mean, anything.
Mayor, this is the gamesmanship I'm referring to. That's, that's exactly it. I'm, I'm trying to get a vote on the actual amendment. And I, you know, and if, if it's a, if it's a two person or a three person vote, it is what it is.
Let's call the question.
And everybody out there, well, finally, thank you. So Madam Secretary, we're gonna call for the vote.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Cam Carr.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Can you go to Member Owens first?
I go in the order.
Okay, then, I, let's just do this. It's a no, sorry. No.
Member Owens. The motion fails three to two.
All right, so the original motion is on the floor. Let's deal with that. Plenty of debate tonight. Madam Secretary, call for the vote. This is back to the committee as it reads and, and out of deference to my colleague, we'll add a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission to it. I don't know that we need a member of, of a motion to that. We'll add a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission to it to help out.
Is that right Darren? We don't need a motion for that? If you want it to be official, it would need to be amended. But if, if it's gonna be informally, then no.
Make an informal, it's, and it's an informal committee anyway. Yeah. No. No. Let's vote.
I make a motion to amend.
I'm not recognizing, we're voting on.
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
We're voting on the original motion.
Excuse me, Mary Cole. Martin's over here in legal. So the resolution is there. The resolution includes Exhibit A. Exhibit A has the committee membership on it. If you'd like to amend or add a member of the P and Z committee to Exhibit A with that committee membership, then I, I would suggest that you need to have a formal motion.
That's what I'm saying. If this, if you want it to be formally included, it would be a part of a motion.
Yeah, let's do this and go, I mean, it, by the time we get to exec session, it's gonna be about 2:00 AM. So let's, let's go ahead and, and do this.
Yeah, we just make it quick. I would like to move to amend this to add a member of Planning and Zoning.
To be named later.
To be named later, yes.
Second. Motion and a second. Madam Secretary, we call for the vote on that amendment.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Cam Carr.
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero.
We have an amended motion on the table to add the member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Madam Secretary, let's call for the vote.
Can I make a motion to amend?
Mayor's decision.
Excuse me. I think right now we have to vote on, we just voted on a proposed amendment and now we have to vote on the motion as amended.
Got it.
Ready, Mayor?
Yes.
Member Cam Carr.
What am I voting on again?
You're voting on the original motion with an addition to the Planning and Zoning Commission being added.
I wanted to make a motion prior to that.
I, I don't under, can we not have multiple amendments on a given motion? You, you can, but I've never heard a motion and a second. Okay.
I wasn't even allowed to say what the motion was.
Okay, what, what's your motion?
A motion that the results of this committee be done prior to December 1st as opposed to January. That way we can get resolution on this faster. It's unfair that we have to put the people through a party boy through the holidays. It's just not right. So I make a motion that the results of this body be presented prior to December 1st.
Second.
Prior to, I'm sorry, prior to.
I'll make it next week if you want to, but I mean.
Can we do it next week?
Let's, let's do your motion December 1.
December 1.
December 1. Amended motion on the table to do this by December 1.
And I also, I have one more amendment, so if we want to roll that in. My, my amendment to this would be to change it so that each member of the council, including the mayor, would nominate one member of the committee and we would go that way. I think that would also, in the instances that we do these committees, would be my preference for how they're populated. I think that's the most fair and equitable way. So that would be my motion, if I could get a second on that, was actually shared with me and I remember Hernandez as an idea.
So let's just throw this out.
No, let's, let's have our elected officials each appointed member in the same way that we have set up for things like the Charter Review Committee and other committees.
Those are all charter, those are all charter regulated committees. This is a mayor's committee. I don't even vote on this. I don't even vote on it. I'm presenting a slate to you guys to be a part of it.
Right. Well, I, I guess I'm saying I would like to have a little more input in the future on, on these kind of matters. That's, seems to be a philosophical disagreement. It's fine. Still would like to grab a beer with you, but that's my opinion.
Mayor, I'm, I'm not against, you got to choose four people and none of us, we've all been elected, didn't get to choose any.
You get to, and it was the same, it was the exact same setup. I was not here to discuss it because my grandmother passed away, but with the, the water billing committee, so I, you know, I think on these big, important public topics, we should have the ability as the council, not just the mayor, to be able to populate those. We acknowledge that for things like the Charter Review Committee. I think that is a, a fair proposal. It is not one that everyone has to agree with, but I think it is completely fair, in bounds, not a game and completely within legitimate goalposts. So that's my motion.
I'm, I, I would like somebody, I, I didn't get to choose anybody. And the water billing committee, that was stuffed down my throat. I didn't get to choose any of those people on that committee. I think this is very important for the folks who are dealing with all of this and I'd like to have my personal.
Mayor, if I could, we, a while back, we had.
I want to address that, for sure. Stuffed down your throat. That, that's your words? Stuffed down your throat.
I didn't get anybody, I didn't get any choices on, on who those people were.
No. Because we had three members of this body, as stated, would set aside a slate. That's how it was done. That's how it was actually voted on by this council. You don't like that, look at your cohorts. Nobody stuffed it down your throat. That's more of that empty rhetoric that you keep talking about out there.
Mayor, if I may, we, we had a UDC ad hoc committee at one point. This is prior to you being our mayor. And at that time, I felt similarly to members Cam Carr and Orlando, but however, these meetings are, my understanding, all open to the public and while the members that were appointed to the UDC ad hoc committee at that time did meet, I was allowed by Mayor Reed at that time to bring interested parties, third parties into the meetings as they are open to the public. We are government entities, so everything we do should be open to the public. And I, I know Member Carbone was on that committee and if you recall, I did have a member kind of come in and join us on one of those meetings. And actually, I'm not totally sure, but I feel as though Member Orlando may have attended one of those. I'm not certain, but it's my understanding that they are for the most part open, that if other members wanted to invite people to join these, that, that wouldn't be looked frowned upon. Is that correct? Cause I mean, that's how it was with the ad hoc committee for the UDC and we had members of the public show up and, and give their input.
Sure. I, I mean, this, this is, they have no voting power. They have no policymaking power. They're simply going to vet and look at some of the different alternatives that we've all seen, okay? So we don't take up two, three, four, 10 hours here. We do that in a, in a committee setting. Their work product comes to this body. I don't, I don't know how hard this really is, but it's, that work product comes to this body who then ultimately has their fingerprints and footprints and teeth prints and everything else all over it. And then sends that to the legal department to draft the final version. I, I don't know how hard that really is to put all of that together. The, this is a simple process and we're making a mountain out of something very, very simple, in my estimation, okay? And I'm, and I'm saying that we've all made this hard. Not just one person or two people. We've all made this hard. We've made it more difficult than it, than it has to be. I don't know why. I don't care why, but it, but it is. We've made it way more difficult. I'm simply trying to put some, some structure around it, advance the ball. You've been talking about it for two years and the ball hasn't been advanced. I can't tell you prior to a year ago, why. I don't know. I do care, but I, I can't affect that through my leadership, trying to advance this ball because it hasn't been advanced. And yet, everybody at the last hour, which, two weeks ago, two weeks ago, with the exception of one, everyone says, I like the idea of the mayor's committee. And look at it. Tonight, we're throwing it out. Mind boggling, isn't it? Mind boggling, okay? That, that's all I know. It's just, it's just absolutely mind boggling because that's where things happen outside of this meeting. You heard it tonight. We got texting going on between members of, of council about the issue. That's a Toma violation, folks. You have something to say, say it out here, not here. It's incredible.
Mayor, let's go ahead and pull the trigger on this and do it. I mean, it's gonna be brought to the table. Everybody in council's gonna have the fun print on it, saying, yeah, I like it, don't like it, add this, take that away from it, whatever. So we can, we could do that later. Let's just go ahead and get through this thing right now.
What I hear that's on the table, Darren, what's.
Can I just, okay, let's go back. There, there was the original motion. There was a motion to amend that, to add a member of the planning, to be determined later, Planning and Zoning Commission to that. That vote to amend the original motion was a.
Unanimous.
Unanimous, okay. So since then, there have been two additional motions to amend. And I think we need to take each one of them up separately on the proposed motion, the original motion, because right now we've got one change to the original motion. I think we need to take up the other two.
I think only one of them had a second though.
Did council member Orlando's not have a second? Cause I believe.
I'll second the, the second motion from Member Orlando.
Okay, so the first one was council member Cam Carr's motion to have a December deadline.
Yes, that's correct.
And so that is a potential change as well needs to be voted on.
So are we taking them one at a time?
We're taking one, each one of these and then at the end of these three amendments, we'll have to see which ones all affect the original motion.
So Madam Secretary, let's call for the vote on Member Cam Carr's, excuse me, amendment to add December 1 as a deadline.
Do you know who the second was on that?
Orlando.
Councilmember Orlando.
What's the motion?
To make the deadline to bring back to council December 1 instead of January.
Or earlier.
Or earlier, right.
Okay.
Right. I mean, it could have been January or earlier. I just put January out there because, I don't know, we have a holiday period coming up and things happen, so.
Y'all may have it settled by the end of November.
Been around the block.
Go ahead and get it going.
Oh, that's the motion.
Member Cam Carr.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero to, to amend the resolution to include a deadline of December the 24th, December the 1st, 2021 to bring back to city council.
Okay. And the second motion, and I believe the second, correct?
Yes, sir.
Was Member Orlando, seconded by Mr. Cam Carr, that each member of the council be given a person to add to the committee or to be on the committee. I don't want to put words in your mouth.
So would, would we have to do that?
Hang on, I, I want to make sure I get.
That was correct.
So we have the members here and would it be, it's totally in addition? So it would end up being five plus?
No, it would be in substitution. So it would be a, a total number of eight members of the committee. One from each council member and one from the mayor.
And so would we have to do that tonight or would we do?
No.
We're not gonna make a December 1 meeting if we don't do it tonight.
Right, just do it.
So I'm gonna force you to put your, put your people up on it tonight. I mean, we're, we're, we're shrinking it and now we want to increase and get our fingerprints all over it. If we're gonna do it December 1.
This is, I, I see one person using a bully pulpit up here and making a, a production, but that's fine. Let's have the, the vote. I, I think Member Hernandez has had a change of heart on where he wants to be. Let's have the change of vote and move on, but I think we need to have a political culture where people can disagree and that's okay. That's, that's what I'd say there.
Can we, can we have it that the recommendation is by Wednesday? So we're at Monday night?
A personal slider, there's no, to borrow a phrase of a, a mayor I know, that there's no obscene motives in the, the rafters, but that people have different opinions about how to effectuate things and that that's all right.
Would that be reasonable to have it, that the nomination has to be by Wednesday? Wednesday at noon? I think that's reasonable.
How are we gonna vote on the members?
Cause we're making amendment to add one person. We can make an amendment to substitute and that the people need to be into the city manager's office by Wednesday at noon.
Again, what, what does that slate look like? Who is it? But how do they represent? How do we know? How do we do a final vote if they're due by Wednesday? I, I, I'm, these are logistical, legal issues on a resolution that has an exhibit A.
I think with the, with the Planning and Zoning Commission, you, it's a person from a, a defined group. Right now, I think, right, we don't have clarity on who, who this pool of people would be.
Oh, the other, the other members.
In, in the interest of time, with, without the support of Member Hernandez, I'll go ahead and retract the amendment and call, and request, not call, but ask for, that we could just move to a final vote. vote.
Back to the amended motion, we have the two amendments voted and approved on. Madam Secretary, we're calling for the final vote.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
The overall motion for the committee, as it is in here, plus the Planning and Zoning Commission member.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero to adopt Resolution Number R 2021-233, to include a P&amp;Z member, and to return this item to city council by December the 1st.
Or sooner, right.
Or sooner.
And council concurrence, I'd like to go to new business item number three, looks like you guys worked it out, unless you want to see the theater the rest of the night. It's all good, we can come back. Martin gave me a thumbs up that y'all worked out the language out there, and I know you guys are in from out of town, so council okay with that? All right, Member Owens, we're gonna go to new business item number three, that was the car wash resolution. Would you place it on the table? And you can read it from the screen. It's on the screen.
Consideration possible action, Resolution Number R 2021-CUB 21-00029, so moved.
We have a motion and a second. Now, staff report, I know, were you able to give those over to Josh, Martin?
Josh, if you'll click share me, I've got it.
And while he's doing that, we had these staff recommended conditions, in addition to the company's standards, that they had no problem putting in as additional recommended conditions.
Correct, so that was the point that I was gonna make, was that I'll show both these staff recommended conditions, and then I'll run through the list of companies' suggested conditions. So again, the staff recommended conditions were that the cartwash be in substantial conformance to the site plan that was provided, that entails both the site plan itself and the elevations of the building, so that way we get those elevations as an exhibit. Then, that the perimeter of the site have a continuous hedgerow, which was indicated within the landscape plan, that's also included in the packet. Then, the five conditions that were discussed in our recess, included the hours of operation being 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. during the winter months, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. during the summer months. That water usage, have a water reclamation tank installed and maintained with the site. That lighting shall shut off at 10:00 p.m. every day, with exception to building lights for security. And that sound mitigation, there will be one blower motor housed within the CMU walled area of the site plan. And that traffic and parking will be accommodated through the site plan that is attached.
Okay, so what we would need is, I guess, an additional amendment to add these conditions discussed with the applicant, 1 through 5.
The original staff recommendations are already included?
No, no, you would need both the original staff and...
Got it. Okay, so then, I move to include the staff recommendations from the packet, as well as the conditions discussed with applicant 1 through 5, as shown on the screen, hours of operation, water usage, lighting, sound mitigation, and traffic and parking.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so I don't think we need any other staff report on this, and want to thank you guys for coming in tonight and doing all that. Madam Secretary, let's call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr? The motion carries five to zero to amend, to include staff conditions and conditions discussed with the applicant, numbers 1 through 5.
All right, moving, item 6 will be moved to a future agenda, because that's the consultant that got stuck out of Southwest Airlines. Moving to item number 7, back to you, Mr. Orlando, would you place that on the agenda, please?
Could scroll down, I think, for 7. Consideration possible action, Resolution Number R 2021-229, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, staff report, real quick.
I'm sorry, I was talking to Darren, which one?
Seven.
So, ratifying, making the council appointments that you have as the City of Pearland for the HAC coming up, assembly and ongoing for their board. I think we moved up a notch, too, with size-wise, with representation, too.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting, we now have only two representatives and two alternates, so because we went over 100,000 official on the census, so we get a little bit more representation, so asked a couple more of the members just to be the additional alternates. I think currently, I'm on the board with Member Carbone as my representative, and so putting us as representatives and two other alternates, I believe. And so with that, any other questions, comments from council? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero to adopt Resolution Number R 2021-229.
All right, the next one has to be read in whole, so Mr. Coker, would you read that in, and Mr. ... You got it? Okay. And Mr. Carbone, would you make the motion?
Yes, again, this is an eminent domain case, this is another property associated with the improvements being required by the Massey Oaks development, and so this is just another one of those acquisitions. In this particular case, the property owner has not come back to the city, so for, with the counteroffer, but I'll go ahead and read the caption in, and then we can have discussion. So, consideration possible action, Resolution Number 2021-230, a resolution, City Council, City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire a fee simple title, interest, a water line easement, a sanitary sewer drainage easement, and a temporary construction easement on certain property for public infrastructure. Improvements being tracts of land containing a .1403 acre tract, a .06072 acre tract, a .3723 acre tract, and a temporary construction easement located within the HTMB, our company's survey, abstract 549, Brazoria County, Texas, being a portion of Lot 60 of the Allison Ritchie Gulf Coast Home Company subdivision, section 24, recorded in volume 2, page 89, Brazoria County plat records, said tracts being portions of a culled 10 acre tract of land, recorded in the name of Arena Boat and RV Storage LLC, in Brazoria County clerk's file number 2020056338, for the construction and maintenance of public improvements on certain real property described herein.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, staff report. Staff report.
I apologize, I'm trying to download the information from the meeting, and I can't see it. You're having issues as well? Can you click on that? Okay, the system seems to be down, and so I cannot click on that, but essentially, again, these are public improvements, being thought the city is not having to pay for these, because the impact is being created by a developer, that money has been deposited in escrow, and that's the money that's being used by the city to acquire the right-of-way for these public improvements. Council has any other questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
All right, thank you for that. Any council comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero to adopt Resolution Number R 2021-230.
Moving forward, item number nine, Mayor Proton, would you place that on the table, please?
Consideration possible action, Resolution Number R 2021-231, so moved.
Motion and a second, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, council. From memory a little bit, the state attorney general, like other states, have been involved with negotiations over a number of years with the purveyors of opioid drugs, obviously widespread and detrimental impact all over the country and in communities. As part of legal matters and lawsuits, there is settlements, class action, and states are lining up to stake out their territory in terms of the settlement with the manufacturers. Texas State Attorney General has been in on that, and this action would put the City of Pearland, acknowledge that we would be accepting of the terms that have been outlined. The amounts have been described as in the order bank, you know, $400,000. There wouldn't need to be some nexus, this is not a part of the resolution, in terms of how they're used, this will be down the road towards, you know, mitigating some of the impact of opioids, and so that'll be for another day. Still waiting for some clearer direction about what that would entail, but again, that'll be coming down, but this would be a step towards that process, to essentially have the City of Pearland be able to administer a grant from the settlement and distribute the monies that would be allocated towards us. Nothing added.
Questions, comments from council? Member Cam Carr?
Will there be any massages out of the opioid settlement?
No. I don't foresee that, but I do want to just clarify, I did call the AG's...
I'm sorry, what does that mean?
Well, apparently staff is getting massages out of city budget, so I was wondering if we could get the opioid issue, some level of massages, maybe for the staff. Sorry. I do want to clarify that, again, the ultimate amount that Pearland would be entitled to is going to be dependent upon how many entities participate in this. I did call the AG's office today and asked for further guidance about the expenditure of the funds. The direct payments, which, if they were maxed out, would be a little over $300,000, which we would receive mostly in the first three years of the settlement, and while there, he says that it's intended to be a nexus, however, those funds are not audited, and as a result, he says, it's up to the council to determine if they feel like, to what extent, they are linked to the opioid crisis, because whether it be used for first responders in law enforcement, or whether it be used for, you know, emergency medical services, or other programming that we design for training for our officers and things of that nature. So he says, we pretty much do have a wide use of those funds, and without being too scrutinized, the other funds that are going to be paid, which, to what I call Region 2, the 54 million or 60 million or so, those funds would be available for grants, which are going to probably have different criteria and guidelines that we'll know about once those are administered, so just wanted to add that information.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Is there like an approval process? Because this is different than federal funds, in terms of, there's option on the nexus. Is there somebody going to promulgate what is expensable or expendable on, or what are the rules on how that?
There is what we call an appendix A and B, but what's interesting, the AG said, the appendix A and B are sort of advisory in nature, as to the types of things you could use it on. However, the appendix, or the appendices that he referenced, are not part of the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement is drafted such that we get the money, and essentially, you get to use it how you choose, but the other are advisory documents. And again, those are on the direct payments, and again, just to clarify, if in a maximum situation, the city would be entitled to, just over, between the distributors and the manufacturers, you'd be looking at a little over 400,000 in that situation, but that can vary depending on participation levels.
Thank you.
Good deal, if nothing else, it seems to be free money. We do have some, I'm quite sure, some limitations on how we have to spend it, but more to come. Darren, did they say when they're looking to wrap this up, I'm praying, they have a certain amount of days by the court, I know that.
Yes, so January 2nd's a critical deadline for municipal, or for various governmental entities to participate, and then after that, there is sort of a window in which, if you can imagine, if you are on the opioid side of this equation, trying to enter into settlements, if the group was too small, it may not be valuable for them to participate, but the numbers are growing with the participation levels, don't expect that to happen, and so there is a small window where, I guess, parties could back out. And then, that would close in January, and then they would anticipate the direct payments starting to flow to cities by the spring.
Good deal. With that, I don't see any other questions or comments. Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Cam Carr?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero to adopt Resolution Number R 2021-231.
All right, moving forward, item 10, Mr. Cam Carr, would you place that on the table, please?
Consideration possible action, R 2021-232.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, staff report.
This is something that I would suggest for consideration, to add to the council rules, and this is just to provide some clarity, and I think sharing of information, it's asking that if we have some new information that's not already in the council packets, that those be provided to my office and the city secretary, at least four hours before a meeting, and then we would distribute that to the whole council. No pride of authorship in terms of the language, so if there's interest in any abilities to strengthen language or edit that, you know, it's your prerogative, so just put this up for consideration tonight. Nothing added.
All right, thank you. Questions, comments from council? I do think, I mean, there's some, I think, proper procedure, if you're looking to change things. Obviously, we make changes at the DIAS, I mean, that doesn't mean you can't make an amendment to anything, but if you're wanting to present information, or, you know, those types of things to the council and the greater council, it'd be good for staff, as well as council, to have a little bit more of a heads-up than, you know, paper or something here at the DIAS, and it also gives staff the opportunity to ask any questions and be prepared for, you know, some of that in the interim, rather than being kind of blindsided by it. So, any other questions or comments from council?
I have a question. Sorry, how difficult would it be if we, instead of four hours, did like 24 hours, but then had this included in the public-facing packet as well? How difficult is it to update the public-facing packet?
So, realistically, if we got some four hours, we could put it up, you know, the next day. I mean, it wouldn't be that, I mean, just, I wouldn't want to be able to have to commit, I mean, it could be done, that meeting, but there's steps that have to be done to make that happen. You know, so it would be part of the record, we do that sometimes, other times, when there's supplemental information, we add that to the record and do that, it's different, it has a separate item.
Yeah, when this item first kind of floated up, the idea of 72 hours was there, and I don't think that's quite fair either, because we get our packets on a Thursday, chances are, we really haven't really dig into them until Friday, so by the time you look at it, you already had 72 hours, and so it's really hard to make that change. I'd kind of looked at noon, which is six or six and a half hours from a meeting, I put noon as a deadline rather than four hours, because that could move, depending on our, it's kind of my thoughts. You see something on Saturday, as you're looking at it, and you think, well, I'd like to present this, but 24 hours, staff would be getting it on a Sunday.
That's a good point.
And so I, you know...
I guess my point is, I would just like to make sure that if we do submit anything that is presented at an actual meeting, that it's part of the public information as well. It would, okay.
Well, I don't know if it would end up initially, because I don't know about the timing.
Like I said, we could add that after the...
After the fact.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, if we could make sure that that's part of this, because it looks like you've spelled out a very specific process here, if we could make that addition, I would prefer that. And then, on the last part of that, Darren, from a Roberts rules perspective, isn't there, is there already a mechanism in place that if we wanted to, you know, allow something to be presented, that I guess council could do it as well, kind of currently, or the mayor could do it with the deference of the council, if there are no exceptions, I'm just...
Are you talking, well, it's still Roberts rules, I mean, it's still gonna be, if you're trying to, are you talking about doing something on the agenda?
So I'm assuming, and for clarity, I guess, this is specific to if something were to be, I guess, projected, is that what this is referring to? Other than that, if I just, in the middle of a meeting, Googled something and wanted to, you know...
Yeah, I think what the thought is, clearly, in the middle of the meeting, there's new information, or you come up with something, or we want to amend something, we can do that. Same thing, in the middle of the meeting, if you want to draw attention to something that's in the packet, hey, go to page 239 of 400, and look at item B, you know, because you want to highlight it, it's already there, but if you're presenting something that's not in the packet as something different, then, you know, here's the rules or procedure to do that, so no one is surprised by it at the table, so I think that's the thought around it.
But, to answer your question, I think that that could still be done through Roberts rules, and through the deference of the mayor, and, you know, getting the floor to be able to be recognized.
Real quick, and I don't have, you know, I don't, I'm gonna let somebody, if they have something on, all of a sudden, they find something, hey, I just found out this piece, you know, you're Googling a subject tonight, 60,000, I mean...
Yeah, right.
That's part of it. Mr. Cam Carr?
I'm in information gathering mode. How did this, who drafted this item, again, like the text? Okay. We had our budget cycle recently, less than 30 days ago, and there's a couple of proposals that we asked Josh to put up there, that were previously presented. Couple of them, proposals D and B, were Thursday, you know, before a meeting, and Tuesday after a meeting, with everybody on the finance team and the city manager included. I can't, like, with respect to the group, if somebody doesn't forward that on, if you send it to the city manager, there's not a whole lot I can do about that. And I think for us, we probably wouldn't have gotten that extra 70 cents on the tax rate, if we hadn't had a viable proposal saying, "Where is that from?" I think, I respect the staff an immense amount, they work 160 hours, they're coming up with agenda packets that are 700 pages long, and, you know, sometimes the answer is, well, show me where. Sometimes we want to say where it's from, you know, or where we think we can do, or is there an alternative? And I think, I understand what the ruling is doing, but I think at some level, members of the council have earned the right to present that material, and I'm happy to comply with the rule, if it says, hey, we need time to look at it. I think that's reasonable. The items I would want is that, if there's something presented on the screen, or something that comes up here, that the general public will be able to see what that is, because I can talk about proposal A, B, C, D, and we can talk about it amongst each other, but the general public doesn't necessarily get the privilege to see that, so I think we need to clean up, you know, what, if it's something that's within the rules parameters, it's presented early enough, that should be in the public record, attached to whatever agenda packet, and maybe after the fact, you know, if we get something at 1:00 p.m. And maybe after the fact, you know, if we get something at 1:00, 1:00 PM on Monday, they go update the the packet for the record of posterity. I think that that's reasonable. I think there's probably a couple of other items, I think, at the very end. I've always heard probably once or twice a month, we got an email at 4:57 PM on an agenda item we're voting on at 6:30 PM from staff with additional information. There's an item here with an exception, you know, to that. I'd probably like to make that a little more ironclad from time to time. I think people who are writing proposals are not doing that every week. I think where I'm doing it are budget items and items of serious import. But I don't have a, I don't think I have a proposal or memo on park and rec. I probably don't have a proposal on our contracts with engineers. I don't, I don't get to that level of granularity. So I think we probably need to do some cleanup on this verbiage, the way it looks, to probably craft this. Like the city manager said, there's no pride of ownership on this. And I think we'd need it to work for the city council as well.
What do you suggest?
I'd like to make a motion to add. Darren, do you have this item?
Well, member Kam, can you let us?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
And then that way we can do one motion instead of, you know.
Member Owens was asking a question. Sorry.
Yeah. Because I also see, you know, there, one of the things is imposing a timeline on the council, but there's no timeline after it's received, how quickly it's going to be forwarded to council. So I would, and I know that's difficult to say, right? It's like we send it to you and maybe you're eating lunch or something. So but try to get it at least as quickly as possible to council. Because I think even noon would be a better deadline. Because honestly, if you send something four hours before a meeting, the chances of me seeing it before, you know, would be difficult. So trying to impress that sense of urgency. And also, it's it's fewer than four hours. By the way, it's quantitative, not qualitative. If we could adjust that, I appreciate that.
Well, that's the reason I'd mention noon is, you know, your your staff's tied up in the middle of a meeting, it's noon, or they're out to lunch, or they're, you know, meeting with an economic development, you know, folks or whatever, and they just haven't had a chance to look at it.
I almost feel like noon to send and no fewer than four hours, or rather, no later than four hours ahead of the meeting, it's sent to the rest of the council.
Yeah. I think that cleans it up and it it does put in when it's going to be sent as well. I don't, I think that's a good.
If it goes in there, if it's with regard to an item that's on the agenda that night, it should be placed on that agenda that evening, whenever it goes in there. If somebody sends it in by noon and it's regarding an item that's on agenda, it should be that agenda for that.
And and I think I think that's what we're, I think that's what we had talked about. From an IT perspective and the agenda perspective, I don't, I mean, if it's received at noon and sent out to council by two, is that an issue having it into the packet by that amount of time? I I'm not the IT guy, so I don't.
It's more of a crystal item. I mean, if guarantee that, it'd be three hours by noon to get it added in there by two?
We could do that. Could. Yes.
That provide you the time to do it?
Yeah.
I believe so.
If it was four hours ahead of the meeting, it might not, because by the time it gets out to the council, we might have an issue.
Right. Right. Yeah. I believe we could.
Okay.
Because you know that most elected people are visual type people, you know, to see. And I think during the budget process, what councilmen brought to the table was information that was within the budget process to look at of the numbers that had been submitted to us that could be changed and where they were located at. I think that'd go a long way. And Darren, some of our process on Roberts rule orders, when somebody's talking about something on council, then you got somebody butts in before you ever get through. So you get two different conversations messed in there. But if you're seeing something on the agenda up there, whether like in the budget process, it was numbers and pulled out of a certain section, this is where it was at. And and you can look at that regardless of how many people is talking at the same time.
Yeah. And and I I think that's good. And you're right, it needs to be in the packet. We did certainly talk about even after the fact, it would certainly be in the packet because it's part of the public record at that point. I do want to make mention, and I absolutely agree with with member Kamkar and and the budget process and putting those things on the table, getting to where we ultimately got to on the on the tax rate. I do want to suggest or say that, you know, staff works for this council. And so if you're presenting something to finance and budget and those types of stuff on your own, which is, which is fine, you have that right. They don't have a right necessarily to react to all of it. Because that's that's from that's from one person. They need to hear from this this body. And you're right, if that was sent in, it needs to be sent to us so we can, we can see it, chew on it, discuss it, all those kind of things. I just want to make sure that the expectation levels are there, that if you're going and or any of us are going and saying, go do this, this is what I want to see in the budget, they have to hear from all of us.
No, Mayor, I think you're 100% on. All the items that were presented were presented to the city manager and the staff. I thought the expectation would be that that would be disseminated. It clearly wasn't. I'm not trying to aspire anymore, but that was the facts. And, you know, if we go clean up this language, I will make sure that, you know, as a council member, you've done your bit. You sent it to the city manager. It's supposed to be disseminated. It's in the packets. That way, no public can look at it and understand what we're talking about and that we're apples to apples. You know, I really believe that, you know, the council and the staff work together, but the staff has a lot more data and information than I do. But when we ever have a different idea, we need to lob something back over the net. And that's really what those memorandums were is here's our thoughts on the budget. And our thought was to go cut. And we eventually came unanimous that we need to go cut more. And I'm happy about that, but we wouldn't have had that if we had not said, well, where do we get the money from? Because the answer is always, where does the money come? And we end up not knowing. And then when we go down to the GL level of our ledger and go say, well, here, here, and here, it at least stimulates the conversation. So that was what the format was for that.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that was understood and I appreciate that. Any other questions, comments from council?
The only thing I was saying, Mayor, is that if we have something on there and we send it in at the right time, and it's regarding an agenda item for the Monday night, that it be pulled, put on there. And if you can't put it on there, you pull that item to the next meeting, regardless of what it is. Because I think it would, if somebody sent it something in, it's noteworthy just to see what it is and the discussion of it. And if for some reason you can't get it on the agenda or whatever, pull that item and let it go.
I want to make sure I understood what you just said. So if if there is a an item on the agenda, whether it's staff driven or council driven, any item, okay? And a member of council has not a question, but some alternative, some other thing, and they want to show this for the meeting.
Yeah.
And they are late to the party to get it in there per the per the whatever we vote on, that the item has to be pulled?
No. I'm saying if you get it in there on time, it has to be on that item that night.
Correct. But if it's, but if it's not on.
If you can't do it, then pull that item until you can get it on there, if it's if it's that important.
So the staff has to pull the item from the agenda that night if a council member doesn't get it in?
I mean, we always have the ability, yeah, we always have the ability to postpone or whatever we want to do. I I think that the the language kind of including the the deadline is is great. And then the exception to the rule, I think there are already Roberts rules in place to handle that.
Right.
Obviously, if if somebody presented something at a meeting and the rest of us wanted to see that, I think we could definitely, you know, ask and have that displayed. I mean, if it's relevant to the conversation and more than one council member, I think, shows an interest in that, I don't see an issue there. But yeah, I think we've already got those mechanisms in place. I don't want to.
Yeah. I was just asking for clarification because I agree. I think there's things in place that if we need to table something.
Because if something comes up on on an item there and say that you turn it in on time and that shouldn't go with that agenda item, and it comes up and and it's failed to put on there what you have submitted in, then, you know, I'm going to ask for it to be removed and consent agenda or the regular agenda to another meeting.
And we all have that prerogative. Yeah.
So if it's if it's that important to put in something.
That's that's part of the normal Roberts.
Yeah. I mean, if it's that important to have it on there.
I understand your comment.
Then you need to look at that or whatever, but, you know, help you make your decision one way or the other.
So do you have an amendment on the timing? We had talked about the noon and then.
Yes, and the four hours prior to.
Four hours.
Yes. And then also, I just, I think that we've also got, yeah, I've got that on here, add to items to the packet as well. And then also, I just think that the very last sentence of this, I feel like council can kind of reserve that already. We've already got that mechanism as well. And that's nothing against, you know, the mayor, but there will be other mayors in the future that may, you know. But I think we've got that mechanism in place already to where the council can as a body decide, we want to see this or we don't want to see this. So those would be my my three, you know, edits to this. So get it into the city manager and city secretary no later than noon. And then that information will be posted to the packet and disseminated to the rest of council within a four hour window of the meeting. And then we just.
Strike the last.
Strike the last sentence. Yes, sir.
Adrian, real quick, on that part, the items presented, the outside material provided prior to the time, the deadline, are to be included under the agenda item?
Yes. So that's whatever.
Oh, you got that? Okay.
So.
Just to clarify, Councilmember Hernandez, do you want, you said within four hours of the meeting? I think, did you want it to be no no later than?
Yes, we can say yes, no later. Sorry about that.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
So just to restate, I move that council members desiring to make individual presentations or sharing of information outside of material provided in the agenda packet regarding any posted agenda items, so submit the additional material, presentation material to the city manager and the city secretary no later than noon. And the city secretary shall post the information provided to the packet as well as disseminate the information to the entire body of council no later than, what did you say, four hours prior to the meeting? And that's it. And so.
So that's.
That's my motion.
You missed the last part. The city manager shall ensure.
To clarify, I think.
Hold on, the city secretary.
Did you want to remove that last sentence?
Yes, sir.
Because Roberts rules does.
Yes, sir.
I agree, does address it.
Being shared with the rest of council was in his purse.
Oh, was it? Okay.
So. All within the four hour period.
Ah, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, on an amendment. Any other questions, comments on the amendment? Madam Secretary, we call for a vote on the amended motion.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero to amend by adding additional language for the city manager and the city secretary to receive information by noon the day of the meeting and the city secretary to disseminate to city council and include in the agenda packet no later than four hours prior to the meeting and to strike the last sentence in the rewrite.
Okay. So we have a an amended motion on the table. Any other discussion, questions?
I guess the other piece seems pretty straightforward, that it's just saying that you can do it without having to add it to the, is that what it's saying? Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
Pretty simple. Madam Secretary, we call for the vote on the amended motion as as just approved.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero to adopt resolution R 2021 dash two three two as amended.
All right. Thank you for that. Moving forward in our agenda, items, eight matters removed from consent agenda, there are none. Out of nine other business, none. Out of, it's not nine, 14. Out of 15, mayor council issues, there are none. We are now moving into executive session under Texas government code 551.087 and section 551.072, consultation with city attorney regarding economic development negotiations and regarding the acquisition of real property at 9:36. and regarding the acquisition of real property at nine thirty-six.
Having returned from executive session at 10:35 PM, we will move to new business continued. New business item number 11. And who's going to make the motion?
I'm going to go ahead and I'll read and recommend the motion and then I'll allow council to so move and second it.
Okay, so new business 11.
All right. Yes, Mayor, recommending a motion to authorize the city manager is designated to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the Pearland Economic Development Corporation to fund public infrastructure costs in an amount estimated to be $623,000 or the actual cost and enter into a development agreement with Prospect 2109 and Pearland Economic Development Corporation as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? None. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
And Mayor, also authorizing a separate motion authorizing the city manager or is designated to enter into a reimbursement agreement between the city and the Pearland Economic Development Corporation, authorizing a development agreement with Prospect 2105 and authorizing the entering into a letter of finance agreement with Lower Kirby Pearland Management District associated with the construction and funding of public infrastructure to serve portions of the Lower Kirby District as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Yes, the last one.
Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
This will involve a prospect, a separate motion for Prospect 2108, recommending a motion authorizing the city manager or is designated to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the Pearland Economic Development Corporation to fund public infrastructure costs in an amount not to exceed $1,650,000 and to enter into a development agreement with Prospect 2108 and the Pearland Economic Development Corporation as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, we call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
This is not the one that there was concern with that you discussed in there.
Okay. Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
This is regarding Prospect 2104, and this would be a recommended motion authorizing the city manager or is designated to enter into a reimbursement agreement with the Pearland Economic Development Corporation to fund public infrastructure costs in an amount not to exceed $1,700,000 and to enter into a development agreement with Prospect 2104 and the Pearland Economic Development Corporation as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, call for the vote.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Kamkar?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
That it? Okay, thought that was four. With that, we're going to move to adjournment at 10:39 PM.